All right, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the Selectman Meeting for Tuesday, February 11th into session. Before we get started, would you please stand with me and let's salute the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just as a housekeeping note, Ms. Amory Stronach is not present. I can tell you she is very, very sick. She's on the road to recovery, which is a good thing. So, we're gonna run through the agenda as we go through the agenda. We are gonna postpone a few things in respect and honor of our colleague, which we'll have her back in a few weeks. So, just as a point of note. Okay, let's jump into our seven o'clock schedule items. It's Order of Taking easement for Andover Street and River Road Intersections Improvements. Just name for the record and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Hardeman. I'm the town engineer. I'm here for endorsement of an order of taking for easements associated with the River Road and Andover Street Intersection Improvement Project. We've been working with our consultants in the city of Lowell on this for a couple of years now. It's going out to bid at the end of the month with Mastot for the work, and they're hoping to start construction later this year. We had to go through the eminent domain process in order to get temporary and permanent easements because we have some encroachments for whether it's utility poles or moving sidewalks, creating new sidewalks, and just the temporary easements are just for the overall construction of the project. I know I've been in front of the board a few times with similar projects like this, Mill Street Bridge, South Salem and Main Intersection Project. If the board has any questions, let me have an answer.
I mean, this is, actually, is this a public hearing for this one here, Mr. Montori?
Yes. Not sure it's a public hearing.
No, it's not.
I didn't see the notice. Okay.
Initially, we had posted for a public hearing at the direction of Town Council, and then upon more review of it, because we're not altering the layout of the right-of-way, it does not have to be a public hearing.
Okay, very good. All right, let me open up to the board for questions. In our packets, we had all the necessary documentation, as long with the schematics of the plan, and this has been in the pipeline for some time, correct?
Yes, it has.
At this point, let me open up to the board for questions. Comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hardeman, for coming before us with the project. I am familiar with this project somewhat through NIMCOG, but I'm asking if you would give us a brief summary of the project, the budget so far, because I know the budget's kind of gone up and down, and what has driven some of those changes on the estimations of cost? And then, if you could briefly summarize how the easements are, how they're impacting the project, but not affecting the right-of-way.
Okay, so the overall kind of intent of the project is to improve the intersection at River and Andover. As many of you probably know, it's a challenging intersection. Because of that, a lot of people avoid it. They cut down trolley, they cut down fisk, and what we're really trying to do is provide a signalized intersection for traffic to safely get through that intersection, and also to add bicycle accommodations as well as pedestrian accommodations out there. We've kind of reconfigured the driveway of the Rite Aid, or former Rite Aid, now Walgreens out there, so that it's directly across from River Road. That's gonna improve safety. Those two elements, the driveway and River Road, will be signalized together. We're adding signalization for the turning lanes on Andover Street to allow people a dedicated left-turn arrow to get onto River Road, as well as providing two lanes on the westbound side heading towards Lowell, so that we can add more queue to the traffic and get people through that intersection and then merge further up Andover Street. The estimate right now on the tip is about $5.4 million. That has gone up. The reason for that is the concrete work in Lowell. Lowell is insisting that Andover Street in Lowell remain concrete, and that is a lot more expensive than just normal bituminous pavement.
Okay.
So that is driving the cost up quite a bit.
Oh, interesting. Okay. And then, if you can, that's great. How did the easements not affect the right-of-way?
So, the easements are for features that don't need to be located within the right-of-way. It's not for vehicle traffic.
Okay.
It's for sidewalks. A lot of them are for utility poles.
Okay.
What we've run into a lot of times is the utility companies will put up poles historically. Sometimes they're not in the right-of-way. They've been there forever, they don't have an easement. When we come in with a project such as this, we then have to go and procure those easements from the property owners.
Okay.
You know, so we kind of clean everything up. The temporary easements, like I said earlier, is for construction. We can't build things in a vacuum. You know, we can't build them without giving ourselves a little room to make a mess before we make it better and clean it up.
And you're hoping to go to bid shortly, I think, right?
This Mastot puts this out to bid as part of the tip, and that's scheduled for February 29.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Krabman?
Yeah, I was out there this afternoon to take a look at it. It's a mess out there. So, it's well overdue. Now, the easements, I know there's a lot of sidewalks that don't lead to anywhere, and there's gonna be some handicap accessibility. See some problems out there. But the bicycle accommodations, is it gonna be, I mean, I know we have some bicycle, but is it extending someplace? Is it going down to the side streets? Or where is that leading to? Is there like a rhyme or reason to where this is gonna go?
So, part of the complete streets process, and because we're a complete streets community, we have to look at adding bicycle accommodations wherever possible. We have been talking to Lowell about extending the bike lanes into Lowell because Andover Street has significant width, and we're also looking at extending them on Andover Street and River Road in Tewksbury as well.
That'd be great. Yeah, any healthy transportation is always good. As I was out there, there was a lot of kids crossing that, those intersections, and realigning the driveway between Walgreens and River Road, that'd be a big help. There's people coming out one way, and people would just, there's too many ways to look when you stopped out there to try to make a turn out there, and it's not really a great intersection. So, realigning that will be a great safety benefit. The reason with the concrete, did they give, is it because of historic, or is it, what is, did they give a rhyme or a reason to why they wanted the concrete out there and their pavement?
Because it matches the neighborhood. You know, it's what the residents up there have had for a long time. It's what they expect to have in the future.
It's noisy, is what it is. Okay, it's, no, it makes, the concrete makes quite a bit, when we're going through the area, it was, you could tell the difference.
Yes.
Of the, when you're driving over it, almost it feels like you have a flat driving over the concrete out there. But if that's what they would like, they would like that. I'm good with bit concrete in Tewksbury. So, all right, that's all I have for questions. Thank you very much.
How about Mr. Brian Dick?
Just a quick question on the funding. So, this is funded by the state, or is it, what's the cost of Tewksbury, if anything?
The cost for Tewksbury is the project to get it to the construction stage, as well as the cost of the easements.
How much is that?
The easements are approximately $110,000.
Yep.
And it was about $200,000 for the design, to get it from conception to the planned specs and estimate that Mastot requires. We had to go through 25% design and review, 75% design and review, 100% design and review before we could finalize the drawings. The cost itself, because it's on the Transportation Improvement Plan, is carried by the state and ultimately the federal funding.
Excellent. So, that whole, that whole intersection's gonna be reconfigured. You're gonna cob around River Road all the way out, not River Road, yeah, River Road, cob around River Road, make it much wider, lights.
Yes.
Sidewalks, all that stuff. So, yeah, so that's echoing Collins, Mr. Krabman. It's a huge project needed, get a lot of calls on that, so I'm glad it's moving forward. What's the, what's the schedule?
So, like I said, February 29th, the project goes out to bid. Mastot expects it to be out to bid for two months, and then probably another month to two months before they do a notice to proceed. So, we're looking, you know, midsummer. We could potentially have a firm lined up, ready to start.
Excellent. That's all the questions I had. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. So, just, my peers covered a few as far as the final stages, and the public has been involved. We've been many meetings. This is very, very similar to the intersection of South, South and Main, correct?
Yes. It's followed the exact same process.
Okay, so this is kind of the final stages. Are there any more public meetings, or to your point, this is 100% now, pretty much, if we take this vote, it kind of gets locked and loaded until we end up digging midsummer? Is there any more public input? At this point, we're done with the public?
No, we've finalized the public input. You know, we've had the public meetings as were required to in the process. We've had, have had quite a bit of public input. We've communicated with the property owners that, you know, we've reached out to and that have responded to us. You know, so I feel like we've taken it, taken it, all the public input we've received and incorporated in the design to hopefully, you know, address all those questions and concerns and include all the elements that everyone's looking for.
Perfect. And ironically, I think South and Salem, the intersection there is probably on tap as well, not to get ahead of ourselves, but in the spring or summer too, potentially, correct?
So, that contract has been awarded, and a contractor, I believe, has received the notice to proceed. Right now, we're just waiting on pre-construction hearing for that.
Perfect. Two dangerous intersections. All right, perfect. That's all I had. So, what is the pleasure, what's the pleasure of the board?
So, Mr. Chair, I'm confused. So, what do we have to do? Just, do we have to read this and vote on it? The whereas, the whereas part in the, you know?
Well, just, I mean...
Just take a regular motion?
Thank you, just, can we make a motion just for the order of taking, for the easement of Andover? I mean, is that simple?
Opt as, approve as presented.
Approve as presented.
So, I'll make a motion to adopt, approve as presented tonight, the intersection from Andover Street to River Road intersection improvement.
Good. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Mr. Krabman. Any discussion? All's in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Hardeman.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, just looking down here quickly. All right, the next order of business is actually residents. If there's any residents who'd like to speak at this time. Please. Yep. Just right up to the microphone and just name and address, and then the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name's Derek Ossia. I live at 35 River Road. I thought this was a public hearing meeting. Maybe we missed the notifications, but I did have two questions on the River Road and Andover Street Intersection Project. One of them's kind of a small item. It's the ramp at the edge of our driveway. It's ramps on both sides, but on the other, one side, it's the ramp which terminates to nothing. So, I was wondering, I spoke with Andrew Stack. He's an engineer for the town, and he said that might be an item that could be removed. We could do the ramp on one side as opposed to the other, just for aesthetics reasons. We think that would look silly. So, I don't know if that's an item that could be an addendum item in the project after it's bid, or we could work with, whatever it is.
Okay. So, let's, okay, I'll pause for, so basically, residents such as yourself kind of still have some questions about the project, potentially?
Yeah, I mean, the minor, as it may be.
Mr. Montori, how do you think the best way to proceed is?
If they wanna, I mean, if you have, Kevin can answer them right now if you want.
Okay.
Quickly follow them. He's here.
Kevin, can we see if we can address?
Especially where they thought it might have been a public hearing that came out first.
I want the residents to speak. The residents can always speak in this forum, so. Kevin, do you mind? Did you get the gentleman's question, or like him to repeat it?
I did. I, you know, don't know the plans by heart, so I'm not exactly sure of the location.
It's a minor detail.
So, when we do a handicap ramp, the requirement is that you have to have someplace to, to put it in aeronautical terms, to take off and to land. So, if we have a ramp on one side, we have to have a ramp on the other side for the person to head off.
I figured that might be the case. I mean, is it possible to just continue the sidewalk? I imagine that's the ultimate plan.
Right. We can definitely look at that.
Okay.
And, you know, I'll look at it tomorrow and speak with Mastot to see if any field changes could be made.
Okay. Good enough. My last question was, was there any consideration in this project to reduce the amount of littering going on at this intersection? I've gone to the Board of Health before about this issue, and there was improvement, but it seems to be a combination of the Republic trucks and the dumpsters across the road, and, I mean, the littering's profuse, and it's getting into the wetlands. Last year, I went back there, I picked up a whole bag of trash. So, I don't know if there was any consideration in this project to make any improvements. I don't know how that would be, but, yeah, additional screening or something.
Unfortunately, littering isn't something we can really design around.
Yeah.
You know, it's more of an enforcement issue.
Right. Okay. I was curious if any of the dumpsters near the intersection impacted the project design, but if not, no.
No.
Okay.
Are the dumpsters residential or business?
No, they're commercial. They're across the road.
All the, shoot, Chair, but those type of things, those businesses, those all would go through before the planning board, and there may be some enforcement. So, each one of those businesses have been granted a permit, but they were granted through the planning board.
Right.
And they have guidelines of what they're supposed to go by. So, when they have a dumpster, when they open a business, no matter how long it's been there, they have certain guidelines they have to go by. Dumpster's supposed to be closed. They're only supposed to open them, but that's the, that's the venue where you could go to. You could go in front of them and say, "We have a problem if they're not closing their dumpsters, and they're not closing the doors, and there's wind tunnel going through there." I actually think that a lot of places, when you have trash coming out, if there's vehicles that are going out, we're putting a signal in there, and we're realigning the intersection, you really can't design for trash. You can't really, you know, for things going out there. People are gonna stop at an intersection and throw things out the window.
Yeah.
And that tends to happen when people are sitting and waiting in traffic. We could look at enforcement. We can look at, we can, you can reach out to the planning board, you can reach out to the Board of Health, and even the Beautification Committee has been looking at the certain areas and talked with businesses. I know my colleague, Ms. Wellman, is on that committee, and they've given citations to people who have actually done betterments to their area, to try to make areas and work with the businesses, to ask them to be good neighbors, and to try to make their areas look nicer, clean it up, and do those sort of things. I don't know if she wants to speak more to that, but that's something that they have been working hard on.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. Actually, we gave an award to the mobile station that's right there for their efforts to keep their site cleaned.
No, they're good. It's the other...
It's one of the other locations, yeah.
Yeah, they have two sets of dumpsters. When we went to the Board of Health, they erected a fence around one of them, and that made improvement, although they don't close it much, but there's another set that litter gets through. And again, it's also Republic Trash Services. We can see them going down the road, and litter flies out. So, that might be a Board of Health issue. I could go back to them again. I just was curious if anything could do with this project.
Through the chair to the town managers, that's something that you could bring to staff?
Yeah, we'll talk about it at staff meeting, and also we'll talk to public services about their trucks.
Appreciate it.
I was gonna say, we don't need to, we don't need to go to a different meeting, right? On behalf of the board, Mr. Montori, can you write to the businesses that it's been called out? And this has been, this has happened before. We take action, we send a letter, and I can tell you, we have a vast improvements for businesses up 38.
Yeah.
So, this is no different. So, to Mr. Town Manager, I would ask, Mr. Montori, if you would just send a letter to the businesses, you know, as the first steps.
Sure.
And let's see if it can get corrected.
Send it from beautification.
Appreciate that.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Hardeman, can you get the gentleman's, do you have to get his email or number based on his, based on his ask about the ramp?
Yes, I would like to. Have a card.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other residents at this time?
Debbie Walker, 129 Mary McMeadows Lane. What's gonna happen to the Enterprise Bank, the white, what's it called now, Dove, that complex there, in terms of, is there any changes gonna be there, and what are they gonna be? Because right now, it's, that parking lot itself is pretty dangerous, the coming in and going out. People just kind of whip through, and I'm just wondering, what's the impact, gonna be any impact to that entry and exit, or?
Did you get her name and address?
Right. So, the entrance off of River Road is gonna remain basically unchanged. The sidewalk on River Road is gonna be moved back towards the parking lot by about three feet.
Okay.
The entrance on Andover Street, the larger one, is gonna be reduced by about eight or nine feet in width.
Okay.
There's gonna be additional green space provided up in front of the property by realigning River Road as it comes out to Andover Street, but we are not taking any action on the parking lot itself because that is private property.
Okay, so people are gonna be able to go in and come out on 133 still? You said you're reducing the width. Is it still gonna be in and out on that?
Yes, yes. It's gonna be in and out on both.
Okay. I was just curious as to if there's gonna be anything done. That's, because it is, it is kind of dangerous there. People just kind of come in and just, they don't necessarily even stay in between the parking spaces, you know, kind of, they just go right across and everything, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other residents at this time? Okay, seeing none, so let's move to, we're gonna move to new business. So, the first order of new business is the Board of Registars vacancy. And for this one here, we had a letter from Ms. Kathy M. Dwyer around the Democratic Town Chair Committee, and it says, "Please be advised, Mr. Robert Deimers has resigned from his position of the Board of Registars as a representative of the Democratic Party effective February 3, 2020. Attached to the document of notification, please note, this seat expires on 6/13/22. Please notify this office on or before March 20, 2020 as a nomination of Democratic Town Committee regarding this appointment." So, Mr. Montori, keep me honest here, but I do believe, I'm trying to consider, what is the action of the board, of this particular board?
You think, you think it's to send the letter that's been provided, and we'll wait to hear from the Democratic Town Committee on who they would like to see appointed as a registrar, and we'll come back to this board.
Okay, but no action, I don't think any action's required.
Just to send the letter.
Okay, perfect, fair enough. Okay, so that's, at least we called it all for the record. Okay, I don't think there's any other further action on that order of new business. So, next is the election staff appointments, and this is just for the residents. This is very typical, coming up to an election year, where we have a number of designees. They're all Tewksbury registered voters. So, here, I just think we're, I'm not gonna read the list, but again, this is standard stuff for our coming elections, and we have a busy season. And that's a tabulate, in a nutshell, centralized tabulation facility for March 3, 2020 presidential primaries. And again, all of the Tewksbury folks are registered voters. So, any questions, any questions from the board? What is the pleasure of the board? And I think here, we just have to approve the election staff nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the election staff nominations as presented by Town Clerk Denise Graffio.
I have a motion by Ms. Wellman. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Mr. Krabman. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Next order of business is, can someone help me with the name here?
Monopolis.
Monopolis.
Monoxilus?
Monopolis.
Good job.
Milton Trust, 11650, real to trust, discharge of mortgage. So, Mr. Montori here, I think this is standard stuff, but just for the residents.
Yeah, so this, this is a mortgage that actually dates back to the 80s, when the town had a, an industrial development financing authority who would get involved in approving projects for businesses in the community. They would get a loan through a bank, identified through a variety of programs. This was a mortgage in bonds that were provided to this company. They've been paid. The mortgage has been satisfied. The company is in good standing, and this is, since the bank, as well as the Industrial Finance Development Committee is no longer around, it just needs the board to discharge the mortgage for this particular group and this particular trustee. It was never done.
And what's, what's the, what's the impact pros?
There was no liability to the town whatsoever. It's just formality because it was just never done, and the trustee's trying to close out the documents.
Okay.
So, that's what... And just clear the, as Ms. Wellman just said, just clear the title for the project.
Okay, very good. And it just, so it requires an approval and a couple of signatures, and away we go. So, what is the pleasure, any questions from the board? What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the discharge of mortgage as presented to the board.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Next, we have a schedule here is the Town Manager Review. So, two things here. So, I mentioned Ms. Stronach is sick, and she's gonna be back in business, hopefully in two weeks. So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna table, I'd like to take a motion to table, I'm gonna take two motions, to table the Town Manager Review. And just for the residents, Mr. Montori reviewed his goals and objectives last Selectman Meeting, and we were gonna give his review per his contract. So, I'd like to make a motion here to table the Town Manager Review to our next scheduled meeting, which is set for March 10. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, that's gonna bring us to the presentation, FY '21 Enterprise Budgets and FY '21 Capital Improvement Plans. And, Mr. Montori, I do believe you have a slide deck, correct?
Yes, just wanted to make sure.
Okay. And I'm just gonna move over to Ms. Melissa here, so I'm not in the way.
Can I help you? No, it's just one of them.
Are you hooked up to the HDMI?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just shutting down. Everyone to sleep again. Okay. Okay, so, this is the annual presentation on the Enterprise Budgets and the Capital Improvement Plan, which is otherwise known as the CIP for FY '21 through FY '25. The presentation will review briefly some definitions that we'll be using throughout this presentation, but we'll be reviewing the FY '21 Enterprise Funds and their budgets. We have a telemedia, which is the Cable Enterprise Fund Budget that we'll review first, and the, and Brian Dorrington's here to answer any questions as we go through that budget. Then we'll review the Water Enterprise Budgets, which include water distribution and water filtration, water enterprise capital, a recommendation on water rates. We'll review the Sewer Enterprise Budget, Sewer Enterprise Capital, and a recommendation on sewer enterprise rates. And then this year, we have the newly, newly adopted Stormwater Enterprise Budget, Stormwater Enterprise Capital, and a recommendation on the stormwater fee for FY '21. And then we'll review the Capital Improvement Plan for FY 2021 through FY 2025. Just to begin with, just briefly, as many of you already know, an enterprise fund that will be, the enterprise funds that we'll be discussing tonight are authorized by Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 53F and a half, which allows for the separate accounting and financing, financial reporting of municipal services for which a fee is charged. and financing, financial reporting of municipal services for which a fee is charged. This allows the community to demonstrate to the public how the costs for the services are recovered, and for that service, the Enterprise Fund allows us to fund all the costs for the service delivery, both direct and indirect, as well as capital, and it clearly identifies each of those within its budget. The enterprise accounting enables a community to reserve a surplus or unrestricted assets for, to use for its operation or capital in the future when it closes out its books at the end of the year, and then the services are treated within an enterprise fund, services that are treated within an enterprise fund are not limited just to water and sewer, it could be used for other things like a hospital, airport, airport services, we use it for cable television and stormwater. And the reasons for adopting Enterprise Fund in a community, it helps the community identify the total service cost, it helps identify the use of service, those who use the service and pay for that service, provides you useful management, useful management information, it retains investment income and surplus within that fund, it prevents deficits from impacting the general fund, it's maintained, maintains Department of Revenue Oversight as well as Town Meeting Oversight for Budgeting. In Tewksbury, we have adopted a Sewer Enterprise Fund on October 1, 2002, we adopted a Water Enterprise Fund on May 2, 2005, telemedia, our Cable Enterprise Fund was adopted on May 2, 2016, and again, we recently adopted a Stormwater Enterprise Fund on 10/119. Again, all of these were adopted at Town Meeting, you know, the budgets for water, cable, and sewer have gone to Town Meeting in the past, and have been adopted by Town Meeting, and stormwater will follow that same process. Some definitions, just briefly, that we'll be discussing that you'll hear tonight, obviously, we talk about when we do the budget, the property tax levy is the revenue the community raises through real estate and personal property taxes that help fund mainly the general, help fund the general fund budget. Capital outlay expenditure exclusion, this is a debt exclusion that communities can adopt for a very specific time for capital projects. A lot of times, communities will use this to purchase equipment and do a debt exclusion for a number of years to pay, pay for that equipment, it's usually smaller projects. A debt exclusion is for larger capital projects where a community funds the debt service for, for that particular project, when the debt service is paid, the debt exclusion or the additional tax revenue for the debt exclusion goes away. The big difference between the capital outlay and the debt exclusion, the capital outlay doesn't incur any debt, it just increases the levy for that particular cost, pays for it, and then it goes away. Capital budget, which we'll be discussing tonight, and capital plan are interchangeable. The Capital Improvement Plan is the actual plan for all of our capital projects, and the capital budget is actually the budget on how to pay for those particular capital improvement plan, capital projects in a given year. Normally, a capital improvement plan lays out all the projects you wanna do over the, in the next year and over the next five years, and then the capital budget identifies how you're gonna pay for those projects, either through the property tax levy, any rates or fees, or existing reserves. Some of the existing reserves that, that we utilize to pay for capital improvement projects are stabilization fund, the stabilization fund is a fund designated to, from, from various funds that are put in the stabilization fund for capital and other spending purposes in the future, that are appropriated for any lawful purpose. Town Meeting approves a stabilization fund to be formed through MGL, Chapter 40, Section 5B. We have three stabilization funds in the community, one for the general fund, which is the standard stabilization fund you see in communities, that has a balance of $5,851,708. We created a water stabilization fund a few years back, specific for the Water Enterprise Fund and for water projects, that has a balance of $1,887,659. We also created a sewer stabilization fund that has a balance of $3,888,278. When we refer to the general fund, that is the account for most financial, that has the most financial resources and activities, and governs pretty much the, the non-enterprise budgets in town, that's where our school budget, our town budget, all of our non-stabilization, non-enterprise fund capital goes through, it's the largest fund we have in the community. When we mention raise and appropriate, this is a phrase used to identify a funding source for an expenditure, expenditures, where it refers to money generated through the tax levy or any other local receipt. Indirect costs you'll see discussed tonight when we talk about the water and sewer enterprise funds and the cable enterprise fund, these are costs for services not reflected in the operating budget for the entity providing the service, but it's indirect costs that are associated with non-enterprise fund departments that are providing a service to that department. The best example is indirect costs for the Treasure or Collectors Department for water and sewer, because they process all of the billing and collect the bills, indirect costs are allocations for myself or the Director of Public Works for oversight of those departments. All of those have charges back to the Enterprise Fund for the, for the cost of the service provided by the departments or individuals. Free cash is a term we use quite often, that's the remaining unrestricted funds from operations of the previous year, essentially free cash is made up of funds that are turned back by various departments at the end of the fiscal year, for funds not spent, as well as for revenue being higher than what we project, or projected for that particular year. Each year after we certify our free cash, the Board, through their policy, has set aside $600,000 to be used for future snow and ice expenditures, we have $600,000 currently in our free cash balance to be used if needed for snow and ice, a snow and ice deficit if we have one going into May Town Meeting. Retained earnings, this account, again, is similar to free cash, but it's specific to the enterprise funds, and this reflects their accumulated earnings and revenue and turnbacks, budgetary turnbacks at the end of fiscal year. Retained earnings for our water and sewer, again, are similar to free cash, and accumulate each year, because unlike free cash, we don't put the retained earnings in a stabilization fund each year, and we usually leave a balance each year unspent, so every year we close out our retained earnings, it becomes cumulative on an annual basis. Water retained earnings has a balance of $1,145,574, sewer retained earnings has a balance of $5,598,694, and cable retained earnings has a balance of $1,564,820. And again, those aren't for one given year, those are cumulative for previous fiscal years also, and again, it's from revenues being higher than projected, and closed out at the end of the fiscal year, or, and also budgets that had surplus in them that were closed out at the end of the fiscal year. First enterprise fund I wanna discuss is the Telemedia Enterprise Fund, which is our cable television operations. The direct expenses for cable television, they are made up of salaries, expenses, capital outlay, reserve fund, which we don't have any funding in, our occupational health costs, and our other post-employment benefits cost, and debt, again, we have no debt. The largest portion of this budget is salaries, the $169,616 made up of the telemedia director, Brian Dorrington, he has a program manager, and we have part-time staff to assist with broadcasting our meetings and other events throughout the community. Expenses that are within the, just stand on salary, salaries will increase next year, 2.25% for cost of living adjustment and step increases for the staff, we also increase temporary part-time to hire, to, for staff for additional hours, in the case you want to hire additional staff for broadcasting meetings and events. Being really the full, second full year of the telemedia department, it continues to grow, and the need for additional staff hours and staff continues to grow, so we increased that line item. The operating budget or expenses, the funds within that $70,000, $70,800 appropriation is to address equipment maintenance and operations, programming, and broadcasting needs within the department. And then the capital outlay budget, $49,651, the funds will be used to purchase a utility slash transport van for the department to transport all of its equipment, that's $33,599, that's to purchase the van and to properly equip the van and customize the van. Then the second expenditure within the capital outlays, to purchase an InfoView digital signage and backup drive to replace the current virtual bulletin board that's being utilized by our local cable stations, that's essentially the community bulletin board that you see on the cable stations, that is $16,052. The indirect costs for the telemedia department are for health insurance, for Medicare, and for retirement, and those total $29,452, this is the first year we've assessed the, the funds, each year we're just understanding what indirect costs should be included in the budget, next year we'll probably, we will be included, we will include insurance for the property that the telemedia department owns, and any, and there is a liability policy will be improving and implementing next year that the following year will have an indirect cost to. The cable enterprise, telemedia department enterprise fund is funded through cable franchise fees, these are funds that we receive from both Verizon and Comcast that fund our local cable access operations, the fee is a pass-through cost to the users of Comcast and Verizon. For Verizon, we get 3.5% of the gross revenues that go towards this, towards their share of the cable franchise fees, and for Verizon, at the moment, we have a 5% franchise fee.
Comcast?
For Verizon is 5%, and Comcast is 3.5%.
Okay.
We project $600,000 in revenue from the franchise fee, this, in FY '19, we generated $766,556,000, we are still gonna project less than what we collected in FY '19, because we are gonna start seeing a decline in the, this revenue because of the streaming that's a lot of services that a lot of residents use, and they may move away from cable, so we're just gonna watch this very closely. From a capital standpoint, just to reiterate what I mentioned in the capital outlay, over the next five years, the capital costs for the telemedia enterprise fund are projected to be $404,051. As I mentioned, in FY '21, we'll be looking to spend $16,052 to upgrade the community bulletin board, and $33,599 for utility van slash transport vehicle, again, all funded within the budget using the franchise fee. In FY '22, we'll be looking to upgrade the Town Hall Meeting Room cameras and switches, video upgrade for the Town Hall, both of those will, are projected to cost $66,700. In FY '23, the second phase of the video upgrade for the Town Hall, projected to cost FY '24, upgrades and improve, and implement a portable projection system for $83,500, and then a broadcast server, and FY '25 for $58,000. Again, all being funded through the cable franchise reserve, as I mentioned earlier, we have retained earnings of a little over 1.5 million, which are available if our revenue from the franchise fee declines, and we need to use this for any capital, and is in reserve for future use. Any questions on the cable? Brian's here to answer any, if you have any, but any comments on this?
Just one brief one. You're coming up on a cable contract negotiation, and so will you be asking for capital, you know, capital improvement funds through that negotiation, not to reveal your negotiating strategy?
Sure, no, yeah, no, it's, it's, we're gonna, it's gonna be similar to what we've done with Comcast, we will seek, obviously, funding for the franchise fee, but also, there will be a capital component for Comcast, it's a percentage, another percentage that we use instead of a flat dollar fee, so we'll seek some, something similar to that. The only real issue with Verizon's gonna be is the length of the contract, they will not go out as far probably as Comcast, but we're gonna try to.
Yeah, I know that we're seeing that across the industry.
But we'll look for both a capital and a normal.
Is there, is there another list of asks that the telemedia department would be seeking to fund if, or would you supplant these capital improvements with funding from the contract? You know, you may not know that now, I don't know.
Yeah, this, everything that Brian brought forward within his operating budget and his capital budget have been brought forward.
Okay.
So everything has been funded, there were no asks by the department that were not funded.
Great.
There is some cap, there's some capital they're working on in their current budget, if something does come up that has not been recognized as we went through the budget process, we can adjust in October, but right now, everything from a equipment standpoint and a project standpoint that's been asked for has been funded.
I think that the two items for FY '21 are very exciting, so I'm, you know, the van and the InfoView, I think will be great assets to the town, look forward to seeing them out in the community. Thank you.
Just a comment here, I wish all the budgets were this neat as far as the telemedia enterprise fund, I did get questions from the residents saying, "Why is this budget so big?", and that's because we've kinda only did liftoff, if you would, one, two, three liftoff in the last 24 months, correct?
Correct, I think last November was, we hired Brian, and then shortly after that, we hired Jason, and then brought on some part-time staff, so really, this fiscal year is the first full fiscal year of the budget, so it's been about, yeah, about a year and a half since we implemented the new approach. The budget, you know, originally, we contemplated needing to find space for a studio, which would have cost more money, but because we're doing things in-house with office space in the Town Hall, utilizing the studio at the high school to its fullest, it's allowed us to really save money and allow this budget to stay within the amounts that we're showing tonight, providing reserves for the future, just in case you do see that downturn in the use of cable television.
That's a great call out, yeah, we have some buffer because of all the streaming, and just a comment, you know, we have, I call it a small band that makes some nice music, so Brian, Jason, and Courtney behind the scenes, I can't thank you guys enough, great job.
Any other questions on the cable, while Brian's here? Okay, Water Enterprise Fund. As I mentioned, the Water Enterprise Fund is made up of two budgets, the water distribution budget and the water filtration budget, the water filtration budget is the, the budget for the water treatment plant, the way we look at it is water distribution is everything outside the plant, regarding pipes and everything, the water filtration handles, everything inside the plants, as well as the water tanks. The water distribution budget for FY '21 is projected to increase $23,878, salaries will increase because of the 2.25% cost of living adjustment, step increases in longevity, overtime is increased proportionally to the increase that we see in regular salaries. The operating side, an increase of $6,410, utilities increased $1,500 based on historic expenditures, maintenance and repairs, just the distribution system increased $2,660, and water meters increased $4,000 to cover the cost of commercial meters. Capital outlay has no, no appropriation for FY '21. Water filtration, again, the water treatment plant, salaries increased $125,224, the salaries include a 2.25% step increase in longevity changes for our current employees, and the big increase in this budget is for two new positions within the budget, for operators and training to be added to the treatment plant, for additional coverage and to provide better operations and safety at the plant. Right now, what we're finding is that, and I actually had this discussion at Shawshank Tech today, because I was asking for them to get more involved in training and getting people prepared to go into the field of water treatment and wastewater treatment. Finding people with licenses to work in our water department has become increasingly difficult, the competition between the communities has become, increased, has increased over the last three to five years, we cannot find people with licenses in treatment. Any young person coming out of school that's looking for a field to get into, this is one area they should look at, because it's difficult to find treatment plant operators. We have a staff at the plant that is closer to retirement than not, we would like to get more people in the plant as treatment plant operators, we'd like to hire operators and training to get them trained so they become fully licensed treatment plant operators. We also would like to, it would, it would help us with the operations, both on a daily, on a daily basis, because sometimes you only have one person up at the plant, overnight, we only have one person working in the plant, which becomes a safety issue, we should have more than one person working overnight. I mean, this is, you know, water treatment plants are sophisticated, we need people to do testing, we need people to make sure pumps are running, during the day, we have people out at different sites in town doing testing, and sometimes we need to bring in coverage, bringing two treatment plant operators then will be essential for the operations of the plant, and over the last 10 years, water treatment plants have become a homeland security issue, they're targets, and having staff up there, more than one person, is again, just good safety. So bringing on operators and training is something important to, to Brian and to Scott Brink, who is the Assistant Director for Water and Sewer, and that's for the large increase, each of the salaries are approximately $51,000 starting. On the operating side, utilities decreased $13,500 based on historic and projected usage of the plant, it's always difficult to project, you know, utilities, because it's based on how much we're pumping in a given year, but with the new efficient- But with the new efficient operations and equipment, we're comfortable decreasing at $13,500. Again, because the plant has been upgraded, repairs and maintenance can be decreased All other supplies at the plant increased $2,750 just for general plant and laboratory items that are needed for the plant. Testing requirements at the plant have increased, as we all know with the new PFAS requirements coming from DEP, and the testing we're going to need to do, not just because of the requirements, because it's something we should be doing anyways. There's a cost associated with that increased testing. Staff development, training decreased for this given fiscal year because the staff training requirements are less than the previous year, but that's it. On a different cycle every year, so some years it increases and some years it decreases. There are no capital outlays, capital outlays being asked in this budget. The combined water department enterprise budgets for both departments increased $142,692 for salary and decreased $13,892 for operating. There was no change in the reserve fund or occupational health or other post-employment benefits. And debt has increased $56,299 for water enterprise budgets, and that includes funding for water distribution projects by borrowing $1.5 million and the share of the water enterprise budget for the possibility of a new DPW school maintenance facility, starting next year, if the borrowing is approved at the, at the October town meeting. Indirect costs, which are the allocations I mentioned earlier, decreased actually in the, in the water enterprise fund because of just changes in personnel and benefits to health insurance, things like that. From a capital standpoint for water, over the next five years, we're looking at 12, a little over $12.2 million in water capital. Of that $12.2 million, $10 million is for water distribution design and improvement. The $10 million is to, for upgrading our water system. We have a lot of old two-inch pipe in town, asbestos pipe in town that needs to be replaced. It's the most brittle pipe we have in the community and a cause for, I think we, we are close to 80 water breaks a year, somewhere, probably just 50 to, 50 to 60. So plenty of water breaks in a given year, so we need to upgrade the system and replace pipe. So that's a large part of the $12 million. $1.1 million for water treatment plant and tank maintenance upgrades. A million dollars for the, for, is it the Astle Street Tank improvements that will need to take place over the next year or two. And then $100,000 that we'll be looking for in FY '20 for a, an assessment of the treatment plant from a emergency management plan for the plant itself. $625,000 for hydrant replacement over the next five years. We've annually approved $125,000 for the replacement of hydrants throughout the community as part of our hydrant replacement plan. And then a vehicle replacement of $512,250 over the next five years, some of that shared with the, with the sewer enterprise fund. Again, we'll use retained earnings to help pay for some of these capital improvements, and we'll be borrowing $2.1 million, starting in FY '22, for water distribution upgrades. We'll probably actually borrow $2 million and use, use retained earnings for the other $100,000. But over the next 10 years, we'll be needing to do that type of work in the water distribution area. In FY '21, we'll be looking to do 1.9, a little over $1.9 million of work in water capital improvements, 1.5 for water distributions improvements through borrowing. That's factored into the upcoming rates for the fiscal year, fiscal year '21. As I mentioned, $100,000 for design of water distribution improvements, $125 for hydrant replacement, $100,000 for water treatment plant risk and resiliency assessment and emergency response planning that's required, and then $167,250 for vehicle replacement. As you can see from this list, retained earnings will be used for everything, with the exception of the 1.5 million for water distribution, we'll be borrowing funds for This next slide gives you an idea of what our debt service is as a percentage of the water budget. It's been consistently around, you know, anywhere from 34% to 37%. We've been consistently, we're going to be consistently borrowing funds over the next 10 years for water distribution improvements, so debt will remain at that consistent level in the mid-30s. It's higher than normal, but we need to improve the water, the water system. Projected revenues for FY '21, we're projecting six, a little over $6.9 million in user fees from water rates, water liens, which properties that delinquent, we're projecting $400,000 in all other fees, which include connection fees, water meter fees, demand fees, and application fees, we're projecting $100,000 for a total of $7.4 million in, little over $7.4 million in revenue from, for the water enterprise fund. We're projecting a surplus of $92,700 in the enterprise fund, based on the revenue we're projecting and the budget that we're requesting. This next slide just gives you a good look at the revenue we had of the last 10 years compared to budget. Some years, as you can see in FY '10, we took in less revenue than we have for the budget, which obviously is never a good thing, but we've been doing well as far as our revenue to budget on a yearly basis. And then water rates, which will fund the water enterprise fund, we're not recommend, not recommending an increase in the water rates for FY '21. Water usage for revenue projections that we are using this year is based on actual April 2019 billing usage, August 2019 billing usage, and December 19 billing cycle usage. The usage is projected for next year to be 649,638,000 gallons. That's actually less than what we projected for this fiscal year, which was a little over 674 million gallons. Usage is down based on the billing cycles that we're using in our projections. One of the reasons we were able to keep rates low, we upped our collection rate from 90% to 95% based on what we've been seeing for collection in town. We have less liens than we've seen in the past, so we were comfortable increasing our collection rate for the FY '21 rates themselves. The rate projections includes the $2 million in borrowing for water distribution upgrades over the next 10 years. In FY '21, as I mentioned, we'll be borrowing 1.5. All of that's projected in the, in the FY '21 rates. These are the tiers. Again, they're not changing. As you can see, we have, our secondary meter has just one area that's different. If anybody uses 47,000 gallons plus, their charge jumps up to $33.17, and that's really used as a conservation measure. Shouldn't be using that much water to, to water your lawn, so we try to deter the people from doing that if they have a second meter. This just gives you an idea of the, the bills, and they're not changing from year to year. The highlighted ones, really, the average use in towns around 55,000 gallons, which is a $474.53 bill. The average in the state, the state uses is 90,000 gallons, which is, our average bill will be $911.34.
Mr. Montari, question. When we moved to the tiered system, I believe it was, was it 2017 to the tiered system?
Yeah, two years ago. Well, we have, we've had a tiered system forever, but in two years ago, we changed how we approached it.
Okay. Good. Any insight, did that change, that, did we receive more, more dollars, less dollars, more revenue, less revenue? Any idea?
I think, I think we received just a little bit of less revenue, little less revenue, because the tiers weren't cumulative from billing cycle to billing cycle, what we did two years ago. We, previous years, what would happen is if you used 15,000 gallons, which was up to the first tier, you would stay at 15,000 gallons, and then the next billing cycle, you would bump up to the next tier, which is a higher rate. So people had higher bills because of that. What we did two years ago, we started everyone back at zero after the first billing cycle. So that allowed people who were not high users to keep their bills lower, but what it also did is if you had a problem in your home or your business because of a leak, you weren't, you weren't penalized at the high tier the whole time after you fixed the leak. So we did see a drop in revenue. How much is hard to say.
Okay.
People's bills did see a change, lower.
Very good.
Just a bill comparison. It's, it's tough to look at the bill comparison because I'm giving you an FY '21 projection, and some of the data that we get from these studies is old, but as you can see, we're higher than the state average, which is based on 2017. We're within the low, high range that the state gives us for 2017, or higher than the median and the MWRA average. We'll see what those look like after they update them closer to 2021, but this is the best data we have at the moment. Just comments on the, the fund and the rates itself. Again, the, the rates take into consideration the impact of water distribution improvements at $2 million a year. And, you know, we projected 10 years out, if not longer, just to see what the rate impact will be going into next year. We're projecting a 5% increase in rates based on current revenue. We'll see a bump in rates each year for the next five years, but we projected that last year going into this year, and things changed based on the way we approached the rates. So every year will be looked at. We'll relook at everything again to see what we can do. Every year, we're, we're improving our rate projections. Munis continues to get better in providing us information. They've gotten away from crystal reports and have a new reporting system or a new reporting tool that we're going to try to take advantage of that may help us for water. But we have better data in water than we do sewer, so water, I'm comfortable with the way we approach it. Sewer, I think we'll probably use the new tools that Munis provides us. Retained earnings, every year, we want to generate retained earnings because retained earnings has helped us pay for capital items without borrowing, purchasing equipment, doing small projects, so generating retained earnings has been a good thing for us. And then capital projects in general, in addition to water distribution improvements, we have vehicles we need to, we want to purchase over the next five years. We want to continue the hydrant project, projects, placement project that we have in place. So more than just water distribution improvements, we have other capital projects within the water enterprise fund we want to continue. Any questions on water?
Mr. Brian Dick?
I have a couple, just going back into the distribution budget. So the water meters increase of 4,000 to cover the cost of commercial meters, is, is that, that's the town's cost? The businesses don't pay for that?
No, we pay for the, for the cost of the meter. Brian, you want commercial? Yeah, for the commercial. They're usually more expensive. Some haven't been replaced, some new meters that will front the cost from them will get reimbursed.
So is that typical, like the?
This is a special situation, actually. Commercial pay for their meters, but this is a situation, we're, we're doing an audit on a, to try to find unaccounted for water, try to bring that down. And in doing that audit, one of the first things they say is, "Look at meters, whether or not they're high use, and whether or not they use a compound meter." So this is two situations where we approved along the line meters that are not compound, but they're heavy users, so we're the ones asking the business to actually change the meter after we allowed them to put in the meter that wasn't compound.
Gotcha.
So it's really on us.
So it's not across the board, but it's more?
No, this is a situation.
Yeah, gotcha. Couple of comments, so, yeah, the salaries, you know, you can see the increase is 2.25%. It's great to see that utilities decreased, you know, 13.5 based on being ahead of the game against new efficient operations and equipment. That's a good thing, right?
Yeah, it was, it was that end, and I've mentioned to the board previously, we take advantage of purchasing solar credits, and that allows us to see savings in our utilities. And the water treatment plant is one of the departments that takes advantage of that.
The, Mr. Montari, so the expenses on the combined water enterprise budget was 13, negative 13, 13,890 on the expenses?
Correct.
You had a good explanation above. I didn't know why that went down. Is that similar?
On the, on the operating?
The combined?
Yeah, a lot of it, again, that includes the decrease in utilities and the repairs and maintenance, as well as staff training and the filtration.
Similar.
Yeah, and then expenses on distribution just didn't have a big increase. It was only $6,400, so the net result was that 13,000 decrease.
890, yeah. That other post-employment benefits, what, what's that line?
So that's the ROPEB liability. That's for retiree health insurance that we talk about in the general fund a lot. That's a liability. I think our liability is somewhere around 80 million, unfunded liability is about $8 million that were required or should be funding.
Yep.
So we, the general fund has $650,000 within there, within the budget to fund their share of it. And then for water and sewer, the actuary has assigned these figures to their, their cost on a yearly basis.
You mentioned that, we talked about the budget. And two other things, the, so the water enterprise fund budget, capital improvements for 2021, so that 1.5 million water distance, distribution improvements borrowing, that comes before us in town meeting in May?
That'll be a warrant article at town meeting.
In May.
In May, yep.
In town people.
As well as there will be an, there will be an article to, so the residents at town meeting will vote on the operating budget itself. So they'll have a chance to vote on water on that budget. Then they'll have a chance to vote on the 1.5 million dollar borrowing for the water distribution, and then they'll vote on the transfer of funds from retained earnings for the projects listed here for design, hydrants, resiliency and assessment and emergency response, and vehicles. So there's really three opportunities to, by the residents to vote on the water budget.
Okay. And then the last thing on rates, great, that's not, rates aren't increasing, and we look at that every year, as you mentioned. It's good to see a 0% increase there. That helps the residents. And then that last piece, when you said the data, I would, you know, we're at 9.11 in 2021 on our comparison for 90,000 gallons, but the data is old, so I would say the state average has creeped up some too. So when you see those numbers, it's closer in line, but we're still, still higher.
Yeah, we must still higher, and, you know, we still have a lot of work to do in our system, but I think other communities are going to have more, will have, you know, we've, we've done a lot of work already with our treatment plant upgrade, you know, that was 12, you know, a little over 12 million dollars. So that's going to start to get paid off, even though we're taking on more depth of water distribution, and I just think other communities will start to catch up.
Yep, very clear presentation on the water, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Mr. Graban?
Don't go too far, Brian. I got a couple of questions. One thing I know, I'm looking at this budget, and one of the things that we've done is, I know we've done a lot of work with where the reconstruction is going, replacing all those water lines, but what is the, I mean, that's the number one thing we get during the summertime. It's like, you know, we get to this time of year, there's more pressure, we repair our water line someplace, and it bursts someplace else. I mean, I, I can't imagine, I mean, how many we had during this wintertime, we get the freeze thaw, the cold, we're constantly bursting. I know we get an old system, and we're asking you not to raise the rates, so I understand we're trying to keep at a, at a budget so we don't raise the rates. But what is the percentage you would say that we've actually repaired or replaced in the town?
I think we've probably done in the last couple of years, we've tried to do a mile a year, a little more than a mile a year, so two or three miles out of 55.
Yeah. No, I mean, I think we've actually done a lot more in the last couple of years because of the reconstruction projects. I mean, they did 38 all over, you did Salem and South, you did North, all those long stretches. I mean, we had some money that was put aside, and everybody always asked us, "Why are we keeping such a budget of these retained earnings, and, you know, why are we saving it, all this money?" And money needs to be used for all these type of projects to get them done. So over the last couple of years... So over the last couple of years, I know there's been, obviously, everybody saw the work that happened on 38 over the last year with the trenches that are going on. There was a lot of water work that happened that was replaced prior to the reconstruction being done. But so, but if we were to say how much of the, I mean, I know we got 50, what'd you say, 55?
About 55, 50 to 55 miles that.
I know it's going to be a constant thing. By the time we get done and we replace everything, we have to go back and those things will be old again. But would you, you know, a percentage, any idea of how much has been replaced? Are we at 30% that's been done? Is it 60%?
No, I don't, I don't think we're anywhere near. Something like that.
So 90% of the water lines are still?
That need to be replaced.
That need to be replaced in this time.
Have, still need to be replaced.
Well, I just want to make it very clear to the residents when these things are happening, we're trying to keep our water rates at a level where we're not raising your rates. But with that, we're only putting so much money aside that we allow you to repair. So we're going at a slower pace than if we raised the rates. So when we get the calls and people are asking us, why haven't this water line been repaired? Why do we have so many? Because 90% of the town is old lines. And little by little, we get to it of what needs to be replaced. So that's, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what the, at some point, like, you know, when would I get to it?
If I might to clarify your question, what percentage of the current water system is the asbestos pipes that are problematic? That's not 90%?
No, that's probably, it's about a third or so of the town. We have about 160, we have about 55 replaced. So it's about a third.
Great, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Krabman.
No, that's, these are some of the things that come up because we constantly, I mean, I don't think anybody on this board has not received a call, why are our pipes constantly bursting? So this is something I think we should be bringing up during the budget of why and how we do things. And they can take a look at the numbers, you can see how much is going to the repairs and how much is going to installing new lines. So this, people should pay attention to this. It's, okay, this is, you're asking us the question, this is the time to be asking us this. I don't see anybody sitting in the audience asking the question. So I just want to make it clear for those who are listening at home, this is what we're doing, this is how much we're spending. We're trying to keep the water rates down and we're spending a certain amount of money each year, but we're not raising your rates by, you know, 20% because we need to do it. They do need to be repaired, but we're doing it at a gradual pace where people ask us, let's, you know, we're spending, we're spending, we're spending. There's a, at this thing, we're being very cautious with the money that's being spent on those things and I think it should be called out, that's all.
And Mr. Chairman, as I, you know, I, in this presentation, I talk about how we'll need $2 million a year over the next five years, but obviously, that's going to be $2 million a year probably over the next 10 to 15 years to address the water system that we, we need to, as Mr. Krabman mentioned, and it's asbestos pipe, it's two-inch pipe, it's four-inch pipe, it's all types of issues that we need to address.
And if we were to spend that money over the next 10 years, we still wouldn't get to where we need to get to.
Correct. We have a ways to go.
Ms. Wallman?
No, I think the presentation was excellent. Thank you very much. I'm glad to see that water rates will be stable for next year. I think that's an important consideration that, and I appreciate the work that's done to keep it at that level. I appreciate the clarity of the presentation and I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Mr. Montori, I just have a few as far as projection of future years. Does this take in consideration, I'm going to call it new growth, for instance, additional townhouses and condos? Now, here's the deal. I know we're not in the business of making money. This is, you know, it's a service, it's a fee, so we're not in the business of making money for water or sewer. You know, we're trying to break even, but does that factor in? And I know sometimes it's a negative because you have to increase infrastructure. But, you know, would you be surprised if it pops open, I don't know what the number was, 6 million gallons or whatever, but would you be surprised in the next 12, 24 months to see that jump up because of new growth?
Not, they'll be, they'll be very gradual. We're seeing actually a decrease in our usage. As I mentioned, we're at 6, we projected 674, we actually projected 674 for this year and that was based on previous year's actual billing cycles and we're at 649. So it's just hard to say if, you know, we could have growth, but it could be a rainy season. So we don't see as much water being used. So it's really tough to gauge.
Okay.
Unlike sewer, we don't project any growth in the water area because everyone is on water and it's just new developments. Sewer, it's a little bit different.
Okay, fair enough. As far as retained earnings, just a highlight to the residents, I always call this a surplus fee. It's taxpayer money or tax. So I just want to say, I think we're demonstrating as a community that we're using those fees wisely. So we are tapping into those fees and using them wisely. You spelt that out many times on, for this presentation. I think it's important to know that we're just not sitting on those, we're actually using them where we can wisely. So I think that's a call out. And for capital projects, for instance, water distribution design improvement, hydrant replacements, vehicle replacements, I know those are like guesstimates as far as, and that's very good, you know, from 2021 to 2025 for the capital improvements. Who, at the end of the day, provides that guesstimate? For instance, is it technicians, operations, Mr. Gilbert? Is it subject matter experts or do we have like an independent auditor come in and say, hey, you know something, the town of Tewksbury, this is what you need? I'm just curious.
So for the distribution, so the capital budget is put together by the director, the town engineer, the assistant superintendents. There's a, there's a group that, that puts that together for different projects that need to be done. So the water distribution design and improvement projects, that's just a budget number and we'll do as much work as $2 million allows us to do. Okay? And that's pretty much what we can handle on a given, given year. And as Mr. Krabman mentioned earlier, you know, there's only so much work you want going on in the town in the given year. When it comes to the design, that's something that the town engineer has pretty good understanding from historical cost of design from our other engineers. So we have some history there when he, when he puts that together. Hydrants, again, that's based on an annual program that we've had of 125,000 is put in X amount of hydrants on a given year. So we know what the hydrant costs, we know how much it's, it's going to go in. And then the vehicles are put together and the equipment by the director and the, the chief mechanic for the department and the other supervisors in the DPW that we have hard, hard costs and what those vehicles are going to cost. We have actual pricing from vendors and we use that, those projections. So some of them are projections, some of those are based on hard costs with some inflationary numbers, inflationary percentages put in.
All right, perfect. And always close on a positive note, no rate increases for 2021. All right, thank you, Mr. Montori.
Sewer Enterprise Fund, there's only one budget in the Sewer Enterprise Fund. This is obviously the sewer budget, wastewater budget for, for the town. This is for the operation of our sewer enterprise system, our sewer system. We have 47 pump stations that we maintain and the collection system that we maintain. The salaries increased $9,697. Salaries include 2.25% cost of living increase, step increases in longevity increases. The expenses decreased $2,768. The, the utilities increased $2,100 for nine, nine generators that we operate and the 47 pump stations that we operate. Leases and contracts decreased $6,460 due to a reduction in our Badger Meter software annual maintenance agreement. Lowell Sewer, which is based on our allocated costs within the Lowell wastewater plant, we're projecting to increase $46,900. We saw a debt service decrease of $138,408 because our sewer debt now is starting to go on the other side of the, the peak. So we saw a decrease there. Our indirect costs increased $19,698 and we saw a total decrease in the sewer budget of $79,630. And that's the sewer budget. The biggest decrease that we saw was, was in debt. The capital improvements over the next five years, we're going to see $3.2 million, a little over $3.2 million in work within the sewer system, mainly to resolve inflow and infiltration problems that we have in our system. If we can tighten up the system from inflow and infiltration, that will save the town money because everything that goes into the system goes to the wastewater treatment plants on Lowell and we get charged for that. So we want to tighten the system up. Plus, DEP is going to start really requiring cities and towns to get more aggressive on the inflow and infiltration of groundwater into the system. We have sewer, sewer pump station improvements over the next five years that total one, a little over $1.3 million. And then fleet equipment and replacement, $472,500 over the next five years. The capital improvements for FY '21 total $572,500. We're going to spend $50,000 to do some inflow and infiltration work, $395,000 for sewer pump station improvements and $127,500 for fleet equipment, fleet equipment replacement. The inflow and infiltration and pump station work, we're going to use the Pulte gift account that we have to pay for that. We're not going to use retained earnings or this sewer enterprise fund to pay for those items. The Pulte gift account is an account that we set up when Pulte Homes built a development in Andover. And through an agreement that we worked out with them and that the board approved, they paid us funds for, to go towards inflow and infiltration and funds to go through, go towards our sewer system improvements. The total amount that we received from Pulte was a little over $1.6 million. And it went into this gift account that we're going to use over the next three years to help defray the costs that are in the five-year plan. We will use sewer retained earnings to pay for fleet equipment replacements. That'll be a cost share between the sewer system and the sewer enterprise fund and the water enterprise fund. Just below, you'll see the balances in the sewer retained earnings, as I mentioned before, is 5,598,694. The Pulte gift account has 1,413,240 left and the sewer stabilization fund has a little over $3.8 million in it. As you can see, sewer has a much higher percentage. The debt is a higher percentage of the budget than in water. The water is in the mid 30s, sewer is in the high 50, 50% range. It's going to drop over the next few years and by 2030 will be under 20%, but it's still high, but declining over the next 10 years. Projected revenue from user fees, we're projecting 5,548,209 in user fees. Sewer liens, interest and fees, $25,000. We've seen a sharp decrease in this area. Connection fees, $250,000. All other fees, which are demand fees and application fees, $100,000. Retained earnings, $25,000 for FY '21. I think that needs to be adjusted to the 790, yeah, the 795 to transfer to the general fund. That'll be, that's the retained earnings we're going to use to help offset debt. And then we're projecting a surplus of $19,810 for the sewer enterprise fund. This just gives you an idea of the revenue compared to budget of the last, from 2011 to 2021, just to give you an idea what the budgets look like in sewer. And actually, it was, in 2011, it was much higher than it is today. Then the sewer rates, the sewer rates, again, similar to sewer, will not, we're not recommending an increase in sewer rates. Sewer usage is based on actual billing of April 2019, August 2019, December 2019 billing cycles, similar to water. We're projecting sewer usage in FY '21 to be 508,54,000 gallons. In FY '20, we projected 517 million gallons, so it is down. And again, the collection rate, similar to water, has increased from 90 to 95%. These are the tiers for sewer. We're seeing a 0% increase both for in-town and out-of-town rates. There was no reason to increase either one of them. The out-of-town and exempt properties, there was really no justification to increase their costs when, when I looked at those separately. I also want to be very careful on the out-of-town and exempt properties because the out-of-town are mainly the sewer accounts on Daskem Road and we just don't want to rely on those too heavily because they could switch over to Andover in any given year and we'd lose that revenue, which would be a problem for us. The exempt properties, a large part of that revenue comes from the, the state hospital. And we've seen a very high amount of usage from the state hospital, both this year and last year, and we'll probably see into the future, but we don't want to project our revenue based on that high usage and high revenue because the state hospital has a combined drain and sewer system. So a lot of groundwater is going into their system that they're paying for and eventually they're going to correct that and will, that will reduce their rates. So we want to be very careful on how much we depend on that revenue. And we don't want to be stuck in a given year that, that decreases sharply. So we're very careful on that projection. This just gives you an idea of the average home is $437.17 for sewer bill and $833 for the average bill based on the state usage. This gives you an idea where we fall. Obviously, this is better than what we saw for water. We're below the state average for sewer, below the median for state, median for states for sewer, and we're below the MWRA average. This is an FY '21 rate for us. We're still behind on what we're seeing in the studies. And, you know, we're largely, we, we show a lower rate than you see in the averages because 50% of our debt is paid by the, on the tax levy through a debt exclusion. If that was on the sewer, you'd see much higher sewer rates. Actually, just to give you an idea, if you look at these rates for the out-of-town rates and the exempt properties, if we didn't, if we didn't have the shift, those would be our sewer rates for the residents, almost double. Yeah. The out-of-town rates are based on 100% of the debt being on the enterprise fund. Just comments on the sewer rates. So 73% of the potential uses are connected. In FY '11, there were only 62%, so we have seen growth, but we're still, still have a ways to go. Future debt service, we've kind of hit the peak on debt service for sewer, so we're on the other end of it and we'll start to see a sharp decline as years go on. We don't expect any new debt on the sewer, except for the portion of the cost for the, for the DPW maintenance facility, which is factored into these rates. Next year, we could see a 5% increase in rates just for that one year. And then it would drop down to a 2% increase in the following year, then a few years at 1%. And then eventually, in FY '28, you would see it level off to not needing any increases in the sewer enterprise fund, mainly because debt starts to drop off significantly. As I mentioned earlier, as Munis improves, we'll improve our rate projections as far as the reporting that we receive from Munis. Retained earnings, we have a fair amount of retained earnings in sewer, but we are going to use a good portion of it to help offset debt, which is allowing us to stabilize rates within the sewer enterprise fund. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we don't want to rely too much on the out-of-town users because you never know if they're going to switch over to Andover and we'll lose a little over $200,000 in revenue in a given year. And the same thing with the state hospital. The state hospital revenue, we're projecting to be about $615,000, which is a fair amount of revenue. But again, that could drop significantly depending on their usage, their actual amount. This was a, this- This was a, this is the lowest year they've ever had, the $615,000. But this year, they're probably over $1 million in revenue. That's it for sewer.
Questions from the board?
Quick takeaways. Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, the, how does the lower sewer work? Like, I see it's up $46,000 this year, projected. Two years ago, it went up $200,000. What's the rhyme and reason to that? Is that every year, they just say, this is what it's going to be?
No, it's based on the total flow of the plant and what percentage of the flow we are. And then they allocate the cost based on your percentage. So whatever percentage of the flow we are for that given year and whatever the budget is, that percentage gets assessed to each town. So as other towns increase their flow compared to ours, we could see a decrease. It just depends, that's why getting that groundwater out of the system is important because it reduces the percentage of flow we send to Lowell.
Gotcha. Need for the stormwater?
Yeah.
That we're going to talk about?
Yeah. From the groundwater for tightening up our system.
Tightening up, okay. Just real quick, the, it was good to again, see no sewer rate increase, good for you, with the residents. And that, just to point out once again, without the tax shift, right, the 70% plus users would have the proposed sewer out-of-town rates, that those would be those rates.
Correct.
That's almost a, that's almost 50% more than what they would be paying right now.
Correct.
Or 70%.
Could be, yeah.
Roughly, right?
Yeah.
So that's good that, to understand what's going on there, that everybody's helping, helping those users that are on, those 70% plus available users. And it looks like from the state figures that we're in a good spot. We've done the right stuff, infrastructure on sewer rates. On the data that we presented from 2017 till now, we still seem to be looking pretty good. However, if that tax shift, if we did do the tax shift, we probably would have been higher than that. That's all I would say.
Correct.
Very good.
Just as a quick note, Mr. Chairman, last year, when we were doing the rates, the board voted to shift back $740,000 from the tax levy to the sewer enterprise fund, which is part of the debt service that we now have in sewer. It helped lower property taxes. The burden was placed on the enterprise fund, but there was no sewer increase at that time either. So it was a real win for the residents, based on the board's decision.
Very good. How about Mr. Mark Kratman?
I'm still stuck on these numbers. 58% of the revenue is still debt on this project. That's untied. Nearly 60% of every dollar is going to debt on these things. And I know it's going down in 2030, but is that the, are we at the peak? I keep asking year after year, are we at the peak?
Yes, we just hit, we hit the peak, we're on the other end.
Yeah, so it's 58%, so it goes to the 56th year. Was it higher, was it higher than 58% at any point?
Probably. It could have been in the 60s, yeah.
That's incredible. So, I mean, yeah, it's great news that eventually this is going down. We keep saying that it's going to happen, but it's happened gradually. But unfortunately, you know, we're paying 58% of every dollar is going to pay debt that, you know, we, the way we financed this was not probably the best way to do it at the time, but it's the way we had to do it. And I'm glad that we've gone away from that practice with everything that we've done. So that we're not, you know.
Just, just on that note.
The future of problems.
Yeah, because you bring up a good point. Remember, this is 50% of our debt. So the real sewer debt is 7.6 million? So when you think about that, and our total debt on the general fund, including all debt exclusions, is around 13. So just gives you an idea what the impact, what that sewer debt really is.
Oh, it's, I mean, I'm not wishing away time, but I'm looking forward to 2030. Only got it to 19%. Be a nice change from 58% to 19%. But, yeah, unfortunately, we're still paying this debt off. I applaud you for all your work, refinancing and doing all the things that you have done and keeping, I'm sure you still have an eye on it, you know, with the rates are and the way things are going. If something changes, I'm sure we'll jump on it again to hopefully reduce some of these debts. But unfortunately, we're paying 58%. That's still a ridiculous number to be paying for, you know, for services. It's, everybody's, when you ask where your dollar's going, that's where they're going. Thank you.
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. I don't know if this question was already asked, so if it was, I can take the answer offline. Looking at the budget versus the revenue, the numbers are very close together. So, you know, in FY '19, 5.9 million was the budget, 5.94 million was the revenue. And projections in FY '20 and FY '21 are closer than that. And so when we're talking about using retained earnings and the stabilization fund to offset some of our expenses, we're not really seeing increases in returns to scale, so to speak, in this budget. So I'm just concerned about the sustainability of that, keeping in mind that I'm really happy about the rate increases not going up. So is this going to necessitate an increase down the road? Or do you think we can see budgets go down? Because they're kind of up and down here a little bit, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, the projections usually are tighter on sewer. And we, we've seen, and the retained earnings are cumulative for all of these years because we don't have as many, the expenses on sewer aren't as great, say, on water. We're always doing water work. We're borrowing for water. We're not doing any borrowings in sewer. You know, we have 46 pumps, 47 pump stations that we could have problems with. That's why it's good to have the stabilization fund and the retained earnings. But you don't see the capital costs and the suicide. But when you look forward on the sewer, you're probably looking at going into next year about a 4% or a 5% increase, then it drops to a 2%, then a 1%. So it kind of stables, gets stable quick because of the debt dropping off. But, you know, I think because of areas such as the out-of-town rates, as well as the state hospital, we will see that revenue higher than I project every year. It will be good for the next few years.
Okay.
Until you see debt drop off and then we'll be able to adjust. So I think it is sustainable for now and into the future.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mottori, I just have one. Can you bounce, it's kind of along the same lines as Mr. Kratman. Can you bounce, please, to the sewer enterprise fund budget, fund budget? Will we have the percentages, the debt, the debt service?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So the concept, I think most residents can relate to these two particular concepts in general. So number one is, I'm going to use the magic word of paying it off. And what I mean by that is, once upon a time, one of my children bought a car and the interest was like 8.5%. And I, over a bunch of years, you can only imagine, you know, a $20,000 car was like $50,000. So as far as the concept that residents can relate to, if we have the sewer stabilization fund at 3.8, the sewer return earning at 5.6, so let's say that's 9.4 million. Have we ever thought to be bold and say, you know something? Let's take that, those dollars potentially, or a nice chunk, and chop that cherry tree down as far as a 3.8 to 3.7 to 3.7, so that that number is a heck of a lot smaller than continue to pay in the interest slash principal?
The type of borrowing, the type of bonds that municipalities have really can't be paid off, like a traditional loan that you would do, personal loan you would do. The best, the, most we can do is refinance them.
That was my next question.
Yeah, so we can't, we can't, plus, we don't, as much money as we do have in reserves, the amount of debt outstanding is so much greater than that. We could, we wouldn't be able to, even if we want, even if we could, to pay any of the debt down. What we do every time we borrow money, and we did it this last go-around when we borrowed for the elementary school, and we'll do it again for future borrowings, we look at all of the debt to see if it's ready to be refinanced. And there's very strict criteria on what can go into refinancing your debt. It has to do with the current percentage, interest rate percentage compared to the interest rate that we have in the, the current debt. In the past, we've had opportunities to refinance and we've saved millions of dollars, and I mean millions of dollars because of it. We didn't have an opportunity the last time around because we had decent interest rates compared to what was out there on the market. But we'll look at them again. And if there's an opportunity, we will refinance.
Perfect. That was my next question as far as refinancing. You know, we have a lot of debt exclusion, new fire station, the elementary school coming down the pike. So that was the question. Any idea like a potential ballpark where we could look at refinancing? Because the burden has been on the residents the last 20 years, hot and heavy because of the deal we did. So any like timeframe where we could potentially look and say, you know something? We can, we can target it. And I know, we don't want to go borrowing more, but sometimes it makes sense maybe to stretch it out another 10, 15, 20 years because of the burden has been so much to the residents over the last, let's say, 20 years.
You know, we, I know that's been brought up before about stretching the debt out further. And we looked at that, but in the end, you're just going to cost the residents more in interest costs. You may see a decrease annually, but stretching the payments out longer, again, that's not something we can do with the current debt. We can refinance it, get a better interest rate. But to spread it out longer, you're just going to cost the taxpayers, you're just going to drag this out and cost them more interest in the long.
I get it, but residents like options, that's all.
Yeah, no, we would.
Residents like options, and I might look at it and say, you know something? Based on the here and now, especially that all the projects we're coming up, we talked about increased rates in water and sewer over 2022, 2023, you know. So just, I'd like to consider the option if possible, and then we can kind of compare apples and oranges and see if it's attractive to the residents, that's all.
Sure, the next time, when we go out to our next borrowing, we look at refinancing, we can look at all types of options in that sense. And I think we've done that before, we've added, they may have changed the schedule up a little bit, but, you know, because it's a municipality, because we're a municipality, we have stricter guidelines than most.
Okay, awesome, thank you very much.
All right, we're going to jump to the new stormwater enterprise. Why don't you guys come on up, because I'm guessing there'll be some questions. So this past fall, we adopted our new enterprise fund for stormwater and our stormwater utility, mainly because of the requirements of our new stormwater permit, but also because we needed to find a funding source to address drainage issues within our community. As the board members know, we get a fair amount of complaints of drain, you know, problems with drainage in the community. And it's fair to say, from my standpoint, and I think the DPW standpoint, it's probably the most complaints we get. Poor drainage on various streets in the community. And, you know, we just don't have the funding to solve the problems the way we would like to. So the average, when we look at the stormwater enterprise fund that was brought forward in the fall and that was adopted, you know, we, we looked, we did a study on our stormwater, financing our stormwater system and our stormwater system in general. And the average budgetary needs for stormwater management over the next five to 10 years is $1.52 million. In FY '21 alone, we're looking at an enterprise fund budget that totals $1,137,940. This is just for the enterprise fund. In addition to this $1.1 million, we have about approximately 377 built into the DPW general fund budget for stormwater that we still have there, that we're not charging a fee towards. And that's for, you know, the staff that's utilized for, for stormwater maintenance operations, for cleaning of catch basins, street sweepings, repair of manholes, things like that. The stormwater fee would fund a portion, a portion of the costs of the remaining amounts not funded in the, in the operating budget. By having a stormwater fee, it would lessen the impact and burden to the general fund. Without that fee, it would impact, we would need to utilize Chapter 90 stabilization fund and free cash to fund stormwater capital. And we depend on those funds for other projects in the community. This pie chart gives you an idea of the breakdown of our costs between drainage improvements, culver improvement replacements, our water quality compliance, and just additional operation and maintenance beyond what we have in the DPW budget for stormwater.
Mr. Mottori, just, the dollars allocated now in the DPW budget, will those dollars be transferred?
No.
Into?
Nope, they'll stay right in the DPW budget. So if we did transfer, which we're not, that $1,137 that we have in the enterprise fund would increase by approximately $377,000. So the fee that we're asking for does not fund anything in the general fund. That's staying separate.
Right, but there's dollars allocated in the, just to keep me honest here. There's dollars allocated currently today for stormwater. And that's in the general fund, correct?
Correct.
And those dollars won't be transferred in the enterprise fund?
Correct.
Is there a reason or?
Just, if we, if we did, the fee, our recommended fee would be higher, so we.
Because we'd have to place those dollars of the general fund?
We, right, because we'd still have, we would take that out of the general fund, free up 377 within the general fund, and now burden the enterprise fund with that cost. You'd have to pay for it somehow.
I get it, okay, thank you.
So the stormwater budget that we're recommending for FY '21, and again, this is a new budget, and it's broken down similar to other budgets, is a total of $637,940. And this is a portion of the enterprise fund that will be funded by the, by the fee we'll be recommending. And it addresses repairs and maintenance to the system, leases and contracted services that we'll be contracting out, professional services within the system, and other areas that we'll be responsible for within the enterprise fund, such as postage for mailing of educational materials that were required to do with the permit. Now, none of the, the one thing that's important, there will be no salaries attributed to the stormwater enterprise fund. There'll be no staffing, there'll be no equipment, there'll be no vehicles. It is strictly operating, repairs and maintenance, leases and contracts, which are going to be things like catch basin cleaning, street sweeping, maintenance of detention basins, complying with the permit, whether it's educational supplies and testing supplies. That's what's part of this budget. Again, there are no personnel, there are no vehicles, no major equipment, and there are no allocated costs like you see in the sewer and water. We're not allocating anybody's time, billing, oversight, things like that. And that's allowed us to keep that in the general fund because the 377 that we mentioned in the general fund are directed to the DPW. But when you go to an enterprise fund, other departments now get involved. We're not allocating their cost. This, this money is strictly going to real projects, real improvements to the drainage system and to the compliance of the permit, and that's important.
What about the workforce? What's, what's the current budget? I, I mentioned earlier that the cable folks there, it's a small band, they play very good music. What's the, what's an 11, $12 million operating budget for Mr. Gilbert?
For the general fund?
For the DPW?
No, it's less than that for the general fund. Yeah, why don't you grab it?
Okay, no, no, that's free. I guess the question is, I'm thinking ahead, just hypothetical. If we do approve this, and all these bodies of work are associated with the stormwater bodies of work, could you ever come back in six months or a year? Because I know you guys are very, very stressed in right now, doing a great job at the DPW. Could you ever come back, Mr. Gilbert? And said, holy mackerel, with all this new work, because it's approved, it puts a strain on the workforce. Any, any thoughts or considerations there?
Well, I would probably do that just because there's a strain on the workforce.
That's my point, so great, right.
But with regard to, with regard to the stormwater, most of this work is going to be outsourced. It's a sweeping contractor is in there, but our sweeper is going out every day doing sweeping as well. The catch basin cleaning, that's contracted out. Very little in this budget would be something that would be taken on by the actual DPW forces. So the stress or the need for staff down at the DPW does exist. It's going to exist with or without this. And if we came back, it would be. It's going to exist with or without this, and if we came back, it would be for work that is above and beyond the stormwater.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, we're not going to be coming forward with staffing to be funded within this enterprise fund.
Right.
Okay. As Brian mentioned, you'll see us come forward in the future for staffing within the general fund for the DPW. I can't predict what a future town manager or selectman might do with this fund, but us, we're not coming forward with that.
My thought process was, we just did the, we did the cable budget, we did the water budget, the sewer budget, and those, keep me honest, those salaries are in the enterprise fund, correct?
Correct.
So that was my thought process of like, hey, we're going to do a lot of work over the five years, a ton of work, based on the five-year plan. Might need a few good men and women to do that job, and I could imagine those salaries, just like our other three enterprise funds, might hit this budget, that's all.
No, we're not planning on that at all. No salaries associated with this.
Okay, all right.
So the DPW overall budget's around a little over $4 million. When you look at the town budget, it's 6.2 million dollars, but 2.5 of it's solid waste. So if you back that out, it's, you know, it's under $5 million.
I think I added the water and.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. And again, that very, very small budget for all the work that you all do, so, okay. Ms. Wellman?
I'm sorry, so he said that the DPW budget of the solid waste is $4 million?
No, when you take the solid waste out.
Once you take the solid waste out, it's $4 million.
Yeah, so the total, the total budget for DPW is net allocations, 5.4 million dollars, if you minus out 2.5, your budgets. Let's do that quick math, you're the math guy.
3.9.
Right, but is that, is that figure 2020?
21.
That's your 2021, so this, and you're looking at 1.1, so another 25% of your budget is just stormwater.
In FY21, yeah. Well, this is operating, this doesn't include any capital.
Okay.
So that 1.1 includes capital. Of that, the operating 637, so. It's operating.
Is there capital?
There will be capital, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
So that 637 is strictly the operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And again, just quickly, when, you know, going through the operating budget, under repairs and maintenance, you know, we'll be addressing illicit discharge within that budget, we'll be using in-house staff to repair and construct basins and drains that are needed under under leases and contracts, that's what we'll be doing, street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, in addition to what we do within the general fund now. Under professional services, we'll be doing illicit discharge investigations, we'll be collecting samples in different areas of outfalls, wetlands flagging. We're going to, we need to develop a chloride reduction plan within that budget. Under the postage, we'll be mailing out public education information to residents. And then under all other supplies budget, we will be posting legal ads when needed, purchasing safety and gear for the department, we'll be doing outfalls, need outfall sampling kits, we'll be doing lab analysis within this budget and investigating and sampling through lab within, and lab analysis for various testing. So that's, that gives you an idea of the, how the budget will work from an operating standpoint. Again, just breaking it down further. Right now, the operation and maintenance budget that will be, that I just mentioned, will do, will add a second street sweeping of the town, we're required by the permit to do, to sweep the town twice a year. Right now, we only do it once within the general fund. We're required to clean all the catch basins once a year. Right now, we only do approximately a third of it. So the additional funding will help us clean all 30, 300 catch basins. And, and it's important to note that, you know, by doing more street sweeping and getting the debris off the streets that don't, that don't go into our catch basins, the times it will clean the catch basins more than we do right now will improve the drainage on all of our streets. So that's, that's a benefit to the residents. Detention basin inspection, rehabilitation and maintenance, we do very little of that right now, if any. And we have 46 of them, some of them actually have turned into what we, what we would now determine as wetlands that we can't address, but they need to have work done to them, so they function properly again, which will benefit the residents because right now, those are the, in some areas of town, these detention basins are the drainage system for neighborhoods, and they're not working. Cleaning and inspecting manholes and pipes is necessary to have a proper drainage system working. By doing that on, on an annual basis and with a, with an ongoing schedule, again, that will improve our drainage system, which again will benefit residents. Right now, we don't do it, we're just reactionary to areas of town that have problems. Under water quality, this is something, again, not currently funded within the DPW budget. This is where we really work on some compliance with the permit for education on best practices for residents and businesses and developers, on the topics of how to handle things like pet waste, septic systems, grass clippings and fertilizer. Again, this helps avoid pollution in our, in our waterways and our, our water system, in our stormwater system. Addressing illicit discharge through detection and elimination by identifying and stopping pollution of our waterways, and that's another part of the, the budget that we're bringing forward to comply with our stormwater permit, and again, to, to ensure that our stormwater is not polluting our waterways. And then finally, good housekeeping and pollution prevention of our own properties in town, on town and school prop that we own, based on our school property and town property to make sure we're not causing any stormwater or pollution in our stormwater that will affect our waterways. In addition to the operating budget we talked about earlier, to Ms. Wellman's point about capital, this is the capital budget over the next five years for stormwater, it totals a little, little over 2.6 million dollars. A little over 2 million is going to improve drains within the town, our drainage system. $125,000 for stormwater compliance and $540,000 for project development, which is design and engineering of stormwater projects. In FY21, $150,000 will go towards drainage improvements in the Vernon Street and Water Street drain installation. I think many of you know, we've received complaints about from residents on Vernon Street that, especially near the old VFW, that there's a drainage, a great drainage problem in that area that has needed to be addressed for many years. We plan to do that in FY21. $125,000 will be used for stormwater compliance for, for installing a structure on town, on either town or school property to improve treatment to stormwater. This is something that the permit requires. It's a one-time cost that the structure, once it's installed, either a rain garden or a detention basin on town or school property to, to treat stormwater. We won't have to do it again, but that 125 is an absolute requirement in 2021. And then $225,000 to start project development of future projects in stormwater that are needed. And we're going to start the design of the drainage on Cayuga Street. And we're going to engineer the culvert repair on Andover Street and Hood Road, which has been a major problem. Design the Pringle Street culvert repair, and then design the Bayberry Lane culvert, which is something that needs immediate attention. That is a top priority for us.
Mr. Montori, just on the, we definitely know about Vernon Street that's up there in South Tewksbury, we've been up there, I mean, that is a mess. I call it, it's a mess for residents. I, I don't have my notes in front of me, but it kind of just triggered my thought process. Didn't we vote on Vernon Street improvements at a recent town meeting? We allocated dollars to that. Was that just for like a project plan or actually quote unquote work?
Yeah, that was, $20,000 was allocated for an investigation on the improvements that were proposed down there.
Okay, and is that how the $150,000 came from the Vernon Street, based on that assessment?
Yes, what, what we feel is necessary in order to construct those improvements.
Okay, regardless of this, is the, do we have a, are we kind of waiting on this to do the improvements down there? Or do we have something scheduled? Because we know it's been a mess for years and years and years.
Right, we've, we've run into some issues as far as easements, where the drainage runs, it runs across private property, gaining access to pop additional sewer manhole, drain manholes, do a little more cleaning, do some wetland flagging, you know, so we're still in the, the process of finalizing our design.
But, but to your point, if we do not implement the fee, then these projects we're listing will not have a funding mechanism. And if we have to adjust and find funding somewhere else, you'll take it away from other projects in reserves that are needed for future capital projects, so.
Understood. I'm not, I'm not underestimating the importance, but there's always a way, there is always a way.
Right, and, and, and so this would be a good time to have that discussion. So, yes, there's always a way. So if you want to, you know, it all comes down to choices and priorities, so without the fee or even a reduction in the fee, these projects and some of the operations that we discussed will not be able to take place. And we're going to need to find alternative funding sources. And even if you find that funding source for one year, by say, taking it out of the stabilization fund, delaying another project, you're just pushing the issue down the road. And then that's, and if you look, as you'll see in the future slides, we have a lot of capital to do in other areas. This board has said to us, we want sidewalks. Sidewalks are in the capital plan. But that's coming from areas that, you know, aren't being impacted because we have a stormwater fee, so yes, there are alternatives, but something's got to give. You can't do everything. You're either going to hit a reserve in future, that impacts future capital, or take away from capital that we want to do in 2021. It's just, it's just choices.
No, completely on the same page, and we'll, I think we have a little bit more here to review, and then we'll, we'll jump right back.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, I just wanted to.
Mr. Montori, could I?
Please, Mr. Bronde.
So if some of these projects didn't happen for the drainage or what we were just talking about, or we'd have to, if they didn't have a funding mechanism, and we had to go get funds and get them done, if we didn't do them, I guess, is what I'm saying, there'd be heavy fund fines when they get to town, or how does, how does that work?
Yeah, so. We have to do, we'd have, we'd have to figure out another funding source because we don't want to be, we need to comply with the permit. And the things we need to do, such as street sweeping the town twice a year, cleaning all the catch basins throughout the town once a year, installing that structure on either a town or school property that I mentioned, those, all, all those things need to be done. And then in addition to that, again, again, this, we need to comply with the permit, but in addition to that, this town has a poor drainage system. It just has a, it doesn't have a good drainage system, and we've done nothing, and I mean nothing, to improve our drainage system. We've developed a great deal, but we haven't improved our drainage system, and we need to do it. That's what this fee is doing. It's complying with the permit, but also addressing a, an area that is in need of being addressed.
Understood, thank you.
So it's, and I, and again, I get called, I got a call from a resident on Friday wanting to know when we're going to address Van Buren Street. It's a major drainage issue over there. Children can't walk. And when they get off the bus, they're walking through big puddles. And that's, that's one of our priorities, but it's on year five of this plan. That shows you how other priorities are taken, you know, importance over that, so. And I don't mean to make, sound dramatic about it, but the drainage in this town is very poor, and we've, you know, we've done nothing.
Thank you.
So the enterprise fund, to continue discussion of it, so we reviewed several fee structures to, to come up with. And we felt that the most equitable way to issue the stormwater fees in Tewksbury is a flat fee for residential parcels with three, with three or fewer units on it. And the fee was based on a billing metric known as an equivalent residential unit, otherwise known as an ERU, this is what many communities use. An ERU is used to compare the impact of stormwater system, to the stormwater system across various land types, land use types. In Tewksbury, the ERU will be equal to the median impervious surface of a residential parcel with three units or less. And in Tewksbury, the ERU, the median is 4,443 square feet, which is, which is what the fee is based on. And the reason why we use the median, and we were talking about averages for a long time, but the median seemed to improve our statistical ability to come up with the, the right number for impervious square feet for, for residents. We kicked out the high outliers and kicked out the low outliers, and the 443 was the best to use. The fee would be set by the board of selectmen annually. We looked at a $30 per year fee per ERU, which would generate approximately $480,000 a year, which falls short of what we need in the operating budget, so we wouldn't be able to address any capital. We looked at a $45 flat fee for an ERU that would generate approximately $721,000 in revenue that we would be able to fund our operations, but would fall short in our capital. And then the fee we're recommending is $75 flat fee per ERU, which would generate 1,190,700, which would address our capital and our operating budget. The reasons for the $75 is, obviously, it addresses both capital operating, but also being the first year of this fee, we really don't know what the collection is going to be and what the revenue is going to be to generate it, so we wanted to have come in higher instead of lower, because we don't want to commit to all these projects and all this work and not have the revenue. So the 75 makes sense. If for some reason this fee generates a much more revenue, and the board wants to relook at this in a year, we can do that. But right now, we're comfortable that the, that the $75 will generate the revenue needed, and this only gives us about a little over $50,000 cushion between what our budget is and what the revenue projection is. So the recommended rate, or the recommended fee is $75 per year. There are 7,855 residential equivalent units, which will generate 589,125 in revenue and 8,021 large residential or commercial ERUs, which will generate 601,575 dollars in revenue. And again, these are all projections. So the average resident, the residents will pay the $75, anybody with three or less units will pay $75. The ones larger than that will pay more based on the estimate of their impervious area. There was a question, I think, the chairman and I talked today about condo units. And the condo units would be charged for their impervious area based on the ERU. And then the condo association would be charged with that fee, and it would be dispersed by the number of units within the condo association. I think we looked at one that by the time we got dispersed throughout the units, it was about a $15 fee per unit when we looked at it. This next slide gives you an idea of, these are the communities that have, currently have fees in place. Some are as low as $20 a year, and some are as high as $66 to $268 a year because they have sliding scales, that's what those ranges are. We're not the low, we're not the high, obviously, based on what we're proposing. But I think it's important to mention that when you, and when I look at this, some of the things that stick out to me are, you know, the towns of Chelmsford and Redding and and Westford, because they're close by. But, but you need to look at what those, how long those communities have had a fee, and how long they've been addressing their stormwater. You also need to look at what type of drainage system they currently have in place compared to ours. You need to look at what type of land they have in their community for, you know, for what I would call country drainage. We are a densely populated community, especially in the south area compared to some of these communities, and we have no drainage. Where some of these communities do. And when you look at the, the higher fees, they're in much more developed communities that, like a Shrewsbury between Route 9 and the development, that's increased in that community. And then Newton, obviously, is a city, Fall River's a city with older systems. So based on the type of drainage system we have, the density of our community, and the fact that we haven't really done anything about drainage, that's why you see our fee higher than some of the communities you would. higher than some of the communities you would look at and say, why aren't we $40, like Chelmsford? Chelmsford had their fee in place a couple of years, maybe a year or so, and they definitely have a much better drainage system than we do. That's it for stormwater.
All right, I have some questions. First, I apologize to the board, after two hours, we're supposed to, we're supposed to take a break. Is everyone okay? I want to, we're good? We'll fight through it, so we'll have a little discussion here. So at the end of the day, here, there's a recommendation of 75 bucks per year. So what I, let's open up to the board for any questions, comments, concerns about the Stormwater Enterprise presentation. I certainly have a few questions. Let's, so let's open up to the board, and we'll go from there. How about Mr. Brian Dick?
Thank you. I guess, right to the point, I had some questions, it was answered by our discussion in the middle of that presentation. Thought the presentation was good, we've had multiple presentations, we understand there's huge drainage issues. I guess on a, on the commercial side of the house, is it, is the businesses, is it a $75 fee to the businesses? Is that how that works?
Again, it's based on, it's, it's, yeah, it's based on size.
So a business that's in a small residential home that turned into a business, that's a $75 fee?
Most likely, I would say.
I mean, like?
Yeah.
It depends on their parking, really.
Really, depends on their impervious cover. Yeah.
Okay.
And their roof, right?
There's an equation, so.
So it's based on the, you know, size of your roof and the impervious cover.
Yep. I think what's good is, we are implementing this enterprise fee. I think, I voted for this on the town meeting back in the fall. I think this is a great way to manage this type of, these issues, this, this problem, this federal mandate. I think the town manager's presented the issues, the drainage issues. So I'm a, I'm kind of a black and white guy, where if the town manager says, we need $75 to fund this, I'm in favor of that $75 fee. I am open to creativity, but I think, I think with the timing, and where we are with, with issues with drainage, and what we're trying to accomplish in this town, I think the fee is fair enough as a flat fee. It's, it can be, Mr. Town Manager, it's, it's, we could look at this every year, correct? I mean.
Look at, you could look at it every year, you could look at it after every billing cycle, if you'd like.
Because, I mean, if you're outsourcing contracted services, I'm sure it's expensive right now, maybe, on the expensive side for those contracted services, because of the economy, and as the economy changes, things change, maybe that's a way to look at each year, if, on the operating side. So I'm a black and white guy, I believe a $75 fee is the way to go. I am not in favor of looking for money elsewhere, basically using free cash every year to make up the difference for an operating budget piece. So I think our Board of Selectmen, we have sound fiscal policies that we use when we, when we look at free cash for emergencies, or for one-time capital expenses, which we'll probably talk about next. So when you talk about emergencies, like when we're light on snow ice deficit, I think that's where we dip into our free cash. I want to see our Chapter 90 money go to where it needs to go, which I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we establish this Stormwater Enterprise Fund, that Chapter 90 money goes to roads and sidewalks?
Correct. It'll go to roads and, and some sidewalks, we're going to use general fund money mostly for sidewalks, but definitely for roads.
But it would go to what it was meant to do.
Correct.
So we're kind of rewriting the ship there. So I'm in favor of the town manager's recommendation, so I just wanted to get that on the table. I don't know if we're going to vote on that fee tonight, but that's where I am, and I think the presentation was good. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. How about Mr. Mark Krappman?
Well, I looked at this, and I'm not in favor of adding any more fees to the community, but unfortunately, this is something, I'm also looking at something that I'm not looking to kick the can down the road anymore, either. This is something that we keep discussing with all our budgets. You know, we don't have enough money to replace our water lines, we don't have enough money to do a number of things, and we keep a pretty strict budget. I, I know people think that we're paying a lot of taxes, and there's a lot of money that we're holding on to, but there really isn't when we go through these things. I can't commend the town manager any more than putting this budget together, saying, here are the numbers, and this is what it is. You know, I would love to be able to say, you know, is there a mandate that's forcing us to do this, that we have to implement at this year? And, you know, we could probably put it off for a year or two years, but how's that helping those people to, that have homes that are flooding? And, I mean, I've gotten, I don't know how many calls in the last year or two of, just down the street down here with the hole, I went down, and I could have taken a raft down the street, that's how bad it was. And, you know, we go up to Vernon, the same thing, and it's not, it's not doing any good for our infrastructure, either. I mean, if roads are flooding, it's deteriorating our roads, it's just sitting there, and we're going to pay for it one way or another. You know, we could put it off, and if, if we're allowed to, I mean, it sounds like we're being mandated to do some work, but, you know, we can push it down, and hopefully, our sewer debt goes off, and so then we're paying less than that rate to try to do, I mean, there's all kinds of different ways to try not to raise taxes. But with some things, it just comes down to, it's, you know, it's, our roads, areas are deteriorating, and, and we're causing more damage by not doing something. So I'm, you know, I'm not in favor of raising something, but with this, I, you know, I don't want to pay $75 as much as anybody else does. And if there was a way around it, and we could put it, another way of doing something, I'd be all in favor of it. But I, looking at this budget, I'm trying to find out where we're going to get that money from, and I just don't see it. I know we've asked, I know we've looked at it, looked at, we tried to put other things off, I know we've asked for, there's been a lot of ask in the last two years, and asking for schools, asking for fire, we're asking for everything. But also, the residents, when I go to town meeting, it's not to this board that's making the budget. We go to town meeting, and the residents go, and they make the town budget, and we sit there, and it's our job to implement it, and come up with a plan of how it gets funded. And the residents went there, and they overwhelmingly voted for this, this fee. You know, granted, there's only 10% of the town that shows up to those meetings, but those are the people that actually came and made the decision. And if people want to be heard, then they, they got to come down to those meetings, and come up with some ideas. I'd love to hear some more ideas on how we could get around this, but I, I don't see anything. So with that, I commend the town manager for coming up with the best rate that he thought he could. This could have easily gone to a higher number, and, you know, much as I don't want to raise anything, it's, I don't see a way around it. You know, if somebody else has any other ideas, I'd be glad to listen to them, but at this point, I think we need to, we got to take care of business. I don't want to kick something down the road where we're paying, you know, once again, we're paying fees, or we're paying interest on something that we can take care of now. So that's my perspective on it.
Thank you, Mr. Krappman. How about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. I had a number of questions, actually, first. So looking at your outsourced projects, most of this is going to be outsourced, and you have contracts and leases that you're going to use, that you're going to use these funds for funding. What cost control measures does the town have to prevent escalation of costs down the road? Because if it's our staff that do, that do it, then we're kind of limited in growth by our collective bargaining agreements, or whatever equipment we need to buy, but when we're talking leases, how many years out are you planning on making these agreements? You know, are you going to go three years, you're going to go one year? What kind of escalators are you talking about?
If I can just jump in before you guys go in, so normally on our, we try to do three-year contracts.
Yep.
And what we do is, we structure them in a way that we don't, we don't extend them, it's up to the town to extend, they're not automatic extension.
Sure.
So it'll be three, up to three years, but after one year, if we think the market's better, we'll end the contract and go out to bid. We've done that with our mowing contract.
Okay.
So threatening to go out to bid is a great way to keep costs down, because the current vendor always likes to, to keep the contract. Prevailing wage rates also can dictate what our costs are, so that's out of our control, but we try to go out long-term, but we always have the out that we can say we're done, and we'll rebid it.
Okay.
Another tool that we're utilizing is everybody around us has to do the same thing. So looking at, we've worked with Northern Middlesex Stormwater Coalition, they've done some regional procurement, but we can do more there, and that's what we're.
So achieve some economies of scale.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, so your $75 fee for residents is, is going to raise 1.1, right? And then you're going to have a commercial increase, it's going to do another 600 or something, so your total revenue estimate is about 1.79 million?
No, the residential will.
No, both combined.
Both combined, yep. So the residential will generate $589,000.
Okay.
And the residential, large residential and commercial will be the six, full, total to 1.1.
Thank you very much. All right, that, I didn't, I didn't capture that. All right, so that's.
Yeah, I didn't actually stick, I should have made that stick out more in the presentation.
No, I appreciate it. And then, you're, you're targeting $75 because you're not sure how much you're going to collect, and you're trying to mitigate the free rider problem, right?
Well, it's truthful.
You don't know what the.
It's truthful. One, it, it gives us the revenue we need to do the capital, we, we need to do, do the, and to undertake the operating that we're, that we need to do, but it also gives us that cushion in case we don't get the revenue we're projecting.
Okay.
Because it's the first time we're doing this fee, we just don't know.
Okay. And so you said something interesting during your presentation, that this is something that we could revisit, you know, after each billing cycle, and I think that's something that we would definitely, on school committee, Mr. Dick might remember, we, we looked at our enrollments per classroom every month, I think, all the time, to keep a very close track on what was happening there, because it is so integral to what, what you're doing in schools, and I think that this might be something worth doing, provided we put in a stormwater fee that gets voted in, keeping very, you know, reporting on that regularly, I think will be important, so that we can be informed when we look to make changes to So one question I have, and most folks who've listened to me know that I care a lot about what's going on with our vulnerable seniors, and I, and my question to you is, for those that utilize or qualify for senior tax programs that we have already, is this something that we could add to that program? I don't anticipate it would be a tremendous amount of, you know, capital, it wouldn't eat into your, your, you know, you could, Selectmen could designate a number or something. I'm just curious how that might work.
Yeah, so that's something we're, we will need to look into, to, to determine the abatement type programs and the exemption type programs. And that's another reason why we'd like to get this going, so we can start thinking about that, and see what other towns have done. And if there are opportunities there, as you said, it's not a large amount, we, we would want to do it, because we don't want to burden somebody like that.
Okay.
So, again, that's another reason why we want to do it. And just to go back on something else you said that was very important about looking at this fee, maybe after the first billing cycle, or second billing cycle, the advantage to doing that with this type of fee, because it's a flat fee, it's more predictable, and we'll have an understanding after the billing, first billing cycle, or maybe the second billing cycle, unlike water and sewer, where it's usage generated, and you don't know what's happening, it could have been a dry year, it could have been a wet year, it could have been just a major leak somewhere.
Sure.
This is more predictable, so when we get the first billing cycle finished, after the 30 days to pay, we'll have a good understanding of what we're going to see for revenue.
Okay. So I have friends who pay a lot of money in flood insurance, and this is something I get phone calls about. So I'm wondering if by improving our drainage systems over time, is that going to mitigate any of those FEMA rates and flood maps that we're talking about? Look at your, I can see it on your eyes, killing me.
I guess the, the simple answer is, it likely will not change the flood planes.
Okay. Well, maybe not the, it's, that's, yeah, okay. The street flooding is a huge problem in this town, and I'm hoping that addressing the culverts, and the street flooding, and the drainage will make life a lot better for residents in this area, and keep water out of their basements, too. Yeah. And then, can any of the costs that you're estimating, I saw the pie chart, be applied to the municipal vulnerability project? I know there's a presentation coming up this week. Is that something, that's a, that's something that the governor's really pushing right now, to look at climate change resiliency in communities, and because we're such, we have so much groundwater, and we have issues with drainage anyway, as we see more storms and heavier storms, and those, those occasional flooding episodes, is there something that we can potentially say to residents, these are projects that we're going to look to put toward the municipal vulnerability project, and maybe fund outside of these costs?
Well, I would say that we are applying for grants.
All the time.
All the time. There's a few DER, I believe, yes, DER has a culvert replacement program, they don't have a lot of money, so it's extremely competitive. If we were to get something like that, then we would inject that into the budget, and we can adjust as we go. I don't know if dedicating a project, this is going to go vulnerability, well, what if that doesn't happen?
Right.
You know, so we would build a budget, a plan, five-year plan, and continue to look for money, and then adjust it, if we were to get something.
All right. So just my comments on the stormwater fee. I, I'm conflicted a little bit, so I believe in creating resilient financial structures that we can sustain, and we use them to protect the investments that we need to make. I, I think it's important that our Chapter 90 funds go toward our roads for paving, to a lesser extent sidewalks, and not so much to other projects like culverts and so forth, that, you know, the thing I hear about the most is the quality of the roads, and not just on Main Street, so, which is not something that we need to be, will be coming out of our Chapter 90 funds. And particularly also the street flooding. It's something that people complain about all, and all the time. The other, but the other thing is, I know once you have a fee, you know, once you have a fee, you never get rid of the fee, and it's sort of the old adage of government, is once you get, once you have a tax, it's, you have it, it's a forever tax, so. Fighting that is, is very difficult. And so I'm cautious, I have a cautious approach. I'm really excited that water rates are going to be stable for this year, likewise with sewer rates, likewise with the tiers. I think it's important to also mention that this town's never passed an operational override. And so over the years, as we've seen structural deficits in the past, we've had many years in, with our prior town manager, where we weren't cleaning catch basins, you know, and there was a lot of deferred maintenance that, you know, you have done an admirable job within the existing operational budget to address, but I see, you know, there's sort of a slippery slope here with the requirements of this, as every politician likes to say, unfunded mandate. But it's true. So I, I am conflicted, I, like Mr. Dick, I am open to creativity. I would like to see, and I'm, I'm encouraged by your, your willingness to look at opportunities for folks who have qualified for our senior tax reduction programs, and, you know, moving in that, in that direction, and in a very strict oversight by, by management and its board. But I am inclined that when our professional managers come to us and tell us, this is what's needed to be done in order to deliver the best service to our residents, I'm inclined to agree, as painful as it is, to Mr. Krappman's point, I don't, not in favor of a new fee, but I'm not really sure that the alternative is there. And your presentation was instrumental in convincing me of that, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I just may quickly.
Please.
You know, and some of the comments that Ms. Wellman just made, just maybe think about, you know, we have, when we go to the capital budget, and it won't take long to go through that, if you take out a couple of things in the future that are important for the town, you know, we're going to present them, they're important to us, us, obviously, but they're important to the town. You know, the DPW facility, and school maintenance facility that we're going to bring forward in the fall, you know, we want to use some of the reserves to help reduce that cost, so we can keep that within the tax levy, and keep that within the operating budget. But if you take that away, and you take away what we have committed, or projected for Chapter 90 money over the next five years, we still have a little over $9.9 million worth of capital improvements we need to make to our facilities, to our equipment, to our, you know, to just our departments in general. The stabilization fund has $5.8 million. So when you think about that, even if we wanted to use other reserves, we still have all those other things, we, that department has brought forward, it's not just me, it's fire, it's library, it's, it's facilities, it's DPW. So we don't even have enough in our reserves to take care of what they're bringing forward in the, just in this five-year plan. We don't want to see, because Ms. Wellman brought it up, and it jogged my memory, deferring maintenance on facilities got us into trouble with the DPW facility that we have, with the school, elementary school that we're dealing with, and look at the costs we're dealing with. So the reason why we want to address the facility at the DPW now, and that'll be the last big facility we need to deal with, maybe until the doing in the Heathbrook. last big facility we need to deal with, maybe until the doing in the Heathbrook. But the, you know, we will address these issues and not run into the problems that saddled this board and previous boards with, over the last few years, with decisions they had to make. You know, that's why we're not looking at alternatives to, to push this down the road a little bit more by using reserves, and putting the fee into place, a fee that you could probably have in place for a good five to 10 years and not have to touch, and address all the other needs, so we don't have these large infrastructure or capital costs down the road. So I just wanted to bring that up and.
Thank you. No, and I just want to respond to one thing that you said, and then, and then I'll be done, I promise. It's been a long meeting already. I, the, the stabilization fund balances that we have, and the retained earnings balances that we have, and these kinds of fees and these structures and the CPA, and all of these, these different mechanisms that we have, and dials that we can turn to control our spending and manage our debt, I think also contribute to our, our bond rating, and it's something that I think is really important for us to protect. And I have a goal, and maybe it's aspirational, of a AAA bond rating, so.
So do I.
Yeah, I know you do. So I think that putting those structures in place that are attractive to bonding agencies are key to achieving that, or at least getting closer to that. And that will, it speaks to the, the comment that our chair made earlier, if we can refinance our bonding at a AAA rate, we'll see a lot more money saved, so, and that will benefit the residents. So I'm selling it a little bit, and I apologize for that. But I do, I do think that is your main point, and with that, I will stop.
All right, very good. I will try to, so I'm going to jump in here quickly. I did scratch off about 15 things that I had, thanks to the board, addressing those questions. And it's no, it's been no secret, Mr. Montori and I, I'm going to say the saying, have locked horns on this, in a good way. And that's what I'm supposed to do as a selectman, to say, hey, question to the void, I call it question to the void. So a few things to start off. Per last meeting, Mr. Kratman made a note, I know it was 177 of 52, so almost 70% of the folks voted for an enterprise fund. I will pause there and say, 70, 177 folks out of the 52 did not vote on a fee. So I want to be very, very careful there, because I spoke to a good number of the 177, and they did not vote for a $75 fee, so we have to make that crystal clear to the voters. There's no linkage there. But, but, so I'm going to preference to, there is an absolute need, an absolute and utter equivocal need, I'm not going to say the word but either. My only point is, I'm looking this as like holistically. The residents had a very tough year, very tough year. We voted for the, we have a new fire department coming, that we did the elementary school, huge debt exclusion, we talked about the sewer debt that is lingering over us. What's the cartoon character in Charlie Brown Linus? That's just a massive cloud, and it impacts residents. And last but not least, the housing values went up for residential, condo associations, as well as our businesses. So I am looking at this holistically, as a selectman, to say, wait a minute, it's been a tough year, and another $75, dot, dot, dot. So I'm just trying, what's the saying, to find the happy medium through working with Mr. Montori, question to the void. And I think we're still, I think I'm still kind of stuck to saying, have we done enough? Have we done enough? And again, Mr. Montori is very good working with us collectively, individually, to say, to get his gears going. And Mr. Montori always says, he, no one knows it all, and it's good for us to work with Mr. Montori and staff to say, how do we do better? So I just want to make sure that I'm looking, what's the saying, you look through the forest, through the trees, holistically for our residents. I do think we can explore more regional. We got 300-plus towns and cities in Massachusetts, all with this same problem. So it's not unique to Tuxbury, and more is better. So if we need streets, what's a, we said, street sweeping is very important, because it's proactively helping correct the problem before we get to the problem. You know, have we dialed for dollars for any one of the 300-plus cities in town and say, hey, we need to hire a vendor to do our streets, more is better. You know what I mean, buying bulk, you save pennies? So I think that's a big opportunity, is regional. In heck, we got a regional department coming in here. So I think a big opportunity, an opportunity for us, is the drill home on the regional. All communities need it, let's, let's tap into it, and more might be cheaper. Second thing, Mr. Montori, just to clarify, the residents have been asking me left and right, any linkage, I know the answer, but I just want to make this clear, there's no linkage to water, enterprise funds. So you, you think about storm water, DPW work, but there's no linkage, correct?
No, I, I wish there was, and if there was, we would have done it a long time ago.
Okay, fair enough. And we mentioned the stabilization fund, very sound policy, I'm not going to say the word but. I will say, the stabilization fund, some people call it a rainy day fund, it is used to say, holy mackerel, we got punched in the belly with this, whatever it is, project. I mean, man, oh, man. For me, 75 bucks, I think that's the punch in the belly to say, hey, wait a minute. I'm not going to say it's unexpected, but now's the time to say, whoa, this is a fee, significant fee. So that's my thought process around potentially, not all, I'm going to say the word offset. I don't think we have demonstrated to the residents that we have a quote-unquote offset outside of the $75. So that was my thought process, or some of the residents, like I said, about how, how are we offsetting this? And I don't think we've demonstrated that to the residents, that we have taken that fee and offset it in any way, shape, or form, to be honest with you. So, any thoughts about that? Like, it, it bites you in the butt, so wait a minute, we do have this money in the stabilization fund, so maybe we do have to offset it, because this is a pretty big nut to hit with the, to hit the residents.
Sure. So, you know, it's important to note that, you know, the chair and I have talked, I got a great length about this, you know, and this board has challenged me and the Department of Public Works to, you know, the last, since actually town meeting, but more importantly, the last month, in developing the, the rate to, to go back and look at every single thing, as the chairman mentioned, in a holistic way. So, and we did. We looked at the rate, we looked at the, the budget we're bringing forward, we looked at the requirements we had, we looked at the capital plan, we looked at reserves. And at the end of the day, what brought me back to the $75 was that we need to put a plan in place that is sustainable year in and year out. Using the stabilization fund would be a one-time, one-time benefit to the, to the, to storm water. It would also take funds away from the other capital projects that are listed in this plan, and you would just delay those. It will impact, using reserves could impact or would impact the, the goal of getting the DPW school maintenance facility within the capital plan, because you wouldn't have reserve funds to go towards that, to get the, to minimize the amount of money we, we borrow. So, because we have so much still to do in this town, the need to maintain, to, to keep our reserves in place to help us, I just came back that this budget, this enterprise budget should be sustained by the fee in total. And that's where we came back to the $75.
Okay, and, and understanding the impact, so when a resident, because I do believe, I know we've kind of incorporated this formula from other towns or cities, and it's still confusing to me. So I think when a condo, when a resident in a condo says, what's my fee going to be? Because you kind of divide, like you said, you do the math, you divide it by the con, number of condos and the formula, I, I'm like, we kind of have to wait and see, because that's what condo folks get whacked with increasing their fees. So they're really, really, really nervous, saying, here we go, our fees are already out the roof, and sometimes they get limited services because it's a condo association outside of, you know, the trash. So I think that's a huge concern, and sometimes the residents in the condos say, we don't treat them as residents, but I can tell you, resident, the condo residents, approaching a good many number of them, because they've seen significant increase in, in, in their property values of, what's my potential number going to be? Is it going to be 50, 75? And I don't have an answer. So I think shooting at that 75 number, for me right now, is, is a little bit too high. And speaking of 75, I'm going to tie this in, I always say the sky's not falling, and this is like, I already got the approach, like, the sky's falling, and I have relatives that have that mentality in the house, like, the sky's falling. We've got to do some work here, it's necessary to do the work here, but I always want to be careful. That's why residents and folks get turned off from government, because everything is a, priority, the sky's falling. We're in pretty good shape, we have significant work to do, but we'll get there, we'll get there. So I just want to be careful that we're not using stare tactics, because that's what turns a lot of people off with government. And to Ms. Jane Miller nailed it, fees don't go down, you know? So my thought process was, if we have, I'm trying to look for the happy medium. If we do set the fee for 90 days, you know, every quarter, quarterly, and all of a sudden, Mr. Montori comes and says, you know something? The fee of X, I'm just going to use a number, let's say 30 bucks per resident, is really not getting us there. So we call another meeting and increase the fees for the next quarter. Like, I think we're kind of shooting for the moon, and like I said, I get it, but that's my thought process, and that's a lot of input from residents, and to Jane's point, you know, especially to the seniors, this is, they're hurting right now, it's been a tough year. We've asked the residents for a lot, so again, that's just my thought process, not saying we don't need it, but like, that's what I'm going to ask Mr. Montori, what's, why don't we just come back to the board if we set the fee at a particular number, and we can make an adjustment just like that? We'll throw it on the agenda and, and set the fee higher, because we're in trouble, because the bodies of work aren't getting there with the funding.
Yeah, I mean, again, when we, we had that discussion internally, and because we need to make commitments to contracts for street sweeping and catch basin cleaning, and because we have projects that we want to get going on, it's hard to commit to those, not, knowing from at least our initial projections, a $30 fee won't come close to doing what we need to do. So it would be easier to put the $75 in place in adjusting after the first billing cycle, because we can make all our commitments, understand what the revenue is, and move forward, than, than the other way. It just, we just, we have too many commitments on, on this, on this enterprise fund. One, because we need to get going on it, because we need to address need in the drainage system, but also because we need to comply with the permit, and we're, and we want to show results in this area, and we're going to do it, and we're going to hit the ground running July 1. So it's just, there's too much, too much for us to go, to costs upfront that we want to start, start getting ready for.
And that, the board did a very good job, I, I'm not going to just waste words or repeat what the board said. And I'm, I'll leave you with this, Mr. Montori, you've been very, very good. And again, just trying to do my job.
Oh, yeah.
To kind of push you in a good way, and, and push the staff to see alternatives. It's not that I know, it's, it's, it's not a want, it's a, it's a necessary, super, super, super necessary. We mentioned South Tuxbury, and you know, I go take pictures with the residents.
I know.
And, and so I know there's a need, I just want to see if, I just think we owe it to the residents to say, listen, every, we left no, what's the saying?
No stone unturned.
Stone unturned, and for me, I just don't think we're there yet. So I will, I, I will leave it at that, and I will open up to the board for further conversation, or potential recommendations slash vote, if there's nothing more from Mr. Montori, and or Mr. Gilbert, or Mr. Hatteman. Okay.
I think I've said, I, I think we, we have looked at everything, we really have, and I don't like being here recommending a fee either, and neither do they, it's easier for us to not. But we believe it's necessary, I, I don't want to be using, I believe, I'm not using scare tactics or being overly dramatic, but the reality is, the sky fell already in drainage, and we need to address it. We just do. I mean, the residents that are calling, you have the pitches, they're sending pitches, we need to do something. And this is, this is what we think is the best plan forward, we, we've looked at everything.
Understood. And you know, I do appreciate the work, obviously.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate, you, you've, this board, you, and we talk all the time, the, it was a, you pushed us on it, and we looked at it, and we looked at it, and we looked at it, and we just came back to this.
Okay, very good. What's, any further deliberations from the board, or what is, any recommendations? What's the pleasure of the board?
If you look for a motion, I'd make the motion to institute a $75 fee to fund the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, for FY 2021, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, July 1, yeah.
July 1.
July 1, okay.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I will second that.
I have a motion, I have a second for discussion. I've, I've tried to make, I tried to make, I tried to make the business case, and I know you, you've listened, and I respect this board tremendously. Like I said, I just, my final comment would be, before we put the motion in, I think, I think we can do a, as selectmen, when we go to town meeting, all of our budget is, selectmen don't raise taxes, right? We go to town meeting, annual town meeting. For me, this is the only, one of the few knobs, and that's, this is the, one of the few knobs that the selectmen can dial, one way or another, to help the residents. So, you know, I would just, just, just ask through, that we, we, we consider that, that knob that we do have an impact on, to move slightly, you know, before the vote. So I probably should have said it before and dropped the mic, but, so we have a motion, and we have a second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed, so it's three to one on the motion carries, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm going to quickly go through the capital improvement plan. So this is the five-year plan that we put together. At some point tomorrow or Thursday, I'll put online and send out to the board all of the narratives that go along with this, but this is the summary of the plan. This first is a summary look at a five-year plan for the different departments, facilities, and grounds, fire, DPW. And as you can see, the bottom line over the next five years, $40.9 million in capital projects being requested over the next five years, 25 of that is for the DPW facility. So as you can see, there's, there's a large amount of work to do. Not all of them will be funded, obviously, in FY 20, in, in May of 21, we may, we'll be putting some off to, to, to the fall. The, the next slide is for the enterprise funds, actually, the, the dates at the top need to be adjusted, but these are the projects for each of the enterprise funds, for water and sewer that we went over, and recently storm water, as well as telemedia. The grant total in all funds for capital over the next five years is $58 million, 25 of it being for the DPW facility. This next slide, you know, gives you an idea of what we're going to either raise and appropriate funds for, transfer from the stabilization funds, CPA funds or free cash for facilities, fire, DPW general fund-type projects, which are mainly the sidewalks, $5 million from reserves to help defray the cost of the DPW made, school maintenance facility, and then vehicles for the, for the DPW highway, totaling $14 million over the next five years. And again, these are either raised and appropriated, transfer, most likely transfer from the stabilization, CPA or free cash. The next slide, this is what we're using, Chapter 94 over the next five years, $5.5 million in Chapter 90 funds for pavement management, pavement management preventive maintenance projects, pavement management reconstruction and road resurfacing, the sidewalks, the $400,000 would be from, it's a complete streets program, funding that we'll be applying for, and hopefully we'll receive, and then the improvement projects, our design projects for, for work going forward. So this is all funded either through Chapter 90, or via estate, estate grants or private grants that we may get. These are the stabilization funds that we talked about earlier, so we don't need to go over those again. As you can see, $9 million worth of RUC over the next five years. And this is again, using retained earnings only, or the stabilization funds. This is the borrowing over the next, that we're going to hopefully bring forward in the fall, $20 million for the DPW facility. The funding is, is within the operating budget for FY 21 already, so the plan is to keep this within the property tax levy and not do a debt exclusion. This is the borrowing that we're going to bring forward for the water enterprise funds, there are no sewer enterprise funds borrowing that we're going to be doing, and this includes both the 1.5 million for next year, as well as what we anticipate for the DPW facility. And then this final chart gives you a spending on an annual basis for all of our capital needs, as well as a total for each of the years for our capital. It just gives you the magnitude of what we're looking at for capital projects. In FY 21, for the general fund, we'll be recommending the following items to be brought forward at town meeting for consideration. DPW equipment totaling $549,000, fire equipment and renovations to the Salt Station totaling $280,000. And then facilities and grounds, we're looking at new carpeting in the senior center offices, a couple of trailers for the, for the facilities and grounds, and we're looking at improvements to the Livingston Recreation Facility. We want to pave the basketball and tennis courts in, in the Livingston Street area, as well as, we're going to redo one of the large diamonds, baseball diamonds down there, that's what the $55,000 is for, for those projects. So we anticipate using $917,000. So we anticipate using $917,000 from the stabilization fund, reducing the balance from 5.8 down to 5.9. The schools will not have any capital this May, whatever they have in capital, they will bring forward if needed at the fall town meeting. These are the water enterprise budget, and sewer enterprise projects and equipment we'll bring forward using retained earnings that we talked about earlier. These are the items that, the very specific items that we'll bring forward in a town meeting article, and how much they'll impact the retained earnings. Again, you'll have narratives on each of these areas of funding or requests over the next couple of days, when I send the full capital budget out. And then just comments on the capital plan in general, we need to make sure we continue to maintain and improve upon our DPW equipment, so we don't fall behind like we did years ago. We want to continue, try to pave as much roadway as we can in, in the community, utilizing Chapter 90 and focusing Chapter 90 on that, if we have additional funding somewhere, it would never hurt to put it towards paving roads and pavement management. We're going to, with the implementation of the fee, we'll be able to comply with our stormwater permit, which is good news. We want to make sure our town and school facilities stay maintained and don't fall behind like they have in the past, so having funding for that, those areas is important. And as you can see from the capital plan, we're funding sidewalks at $250,000 a year, using either free cash or stabilization fund. And then last slide, just so of note, we're not addressing everything in this capital budget, and if, in the capital budget in, in May, we'll still have areas to address, both operationally and from a capital standpoint. Just quickly on operations, if we have additional funding in October, obviously, school staffing and operating costs will be looked at, police overtime, public safety overtime is always something we look at for additional funding. We talked about DPW staffing needs in the operating budget, the senior center has needs for funding in the operating budget, they would like to have less reliance on their, their formula grant, so they can use that for programs and put more of the cost of their formula grant into the budget, which is something we'd like to do. And obviously, ongoing infrastructure and facility maintenance within the operating budget's important, and a need that could always use funding. From a capital standpoint, we're deferring the, the purchase of a rubber tire excavator in the DPW, we're deferring senior center atrium lights, lighting upgrade and roof till the fall, the, the town hall annex flooring and carpeting at the libraries being deferred until the fall, and school needs, nothing coming forward in May, but most likely you'll see something for buildings and technology in, in the fall. Free cash, whatever certified for July 1, we'll obviously set aside $600,000 for free cash for future snow and ice deficits, we currently have 600 set aside for the FY 20 snow and ice deficit, I think right now, Brian, we're over $300,000 a deficit in our snow and ice, so we'll use some of that 300 for that. We want to use the free cash that's certified in July to replenish the $917,000 that we'll use out of the stabilization fund at May town meeting, so we maintain a healthy stabilization fund for future projects. We want to use available funds that we have, whether it's stabilization fund, free cash, or other reserves, to help to fray the cost of the DPW school facility, so we can reduce the borrowing amount. And then use available funds, obviously, in the future to address town and school facilities, equipment and infrastructure that you see in the capital budget. So these are all things to keep on the radar screen that will always come up at October town meeting, that can't be addressed at May town meeting. That's it.
Thank you.
Sorry for the length.
No, it's important, I mean, that's what, that's what we're here for, so it's very good. Gentlemen, thank you very much. I know it's very late on your side, thank you.
Thank you, go home.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right, thank you. All right, almost there, team, so why don't we do, Mr. Montori, you're still up, mister.
Very quickly, there, there are invoices to approve for senior town council for December. I'd ask the board to approve invoice of $17,466.90.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
And then for town council, for January 1 through January 15, 2020, in amounts of $3,060.
Still moved. I have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
We do not have any minutes this evening, Mr. Chairman.
No minutes from the clerk, okay? How about board member reports? We'll start with Mr. Krappman.
No, not the new report this week.
It's Brian Dick.
I have nothing to report.
Ms. Swelman.
Anyway, I'll remind people, as we have a primary coming up, March 3, and tomorrow is the last day to register to vote for that primary, I think, fairly certain. Thank you very much.
Very good, and I have, I have no reports, I'll have some reports on March 10 for our next meeting. And again, for professional courtesy, we're going to hold the executive session, the next meeting, for Paul Mistrana, that's sick as a doggy, and so that brings us to, who wants to?
Make some motion, adjourned?
Second.
I have a motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you guys very much, thank you.
Thank you.